Hello?
Okay, could we please have a, we'll be calling the Planning Commission meeting and joint meeting with the Design Review Board of November 19th to order. Could we please have a roll call of the Planning Commission?
Commissioner Dubin?
Here.
Commissioner Sadler?
Here.
Commissioner Whiten?
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Goldman?
Yeah.
Chair Kellenberg?
Here. And Member Goldman and Member Gannon, do either one of you have any members of the public with you?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, and you will let us know if somebody shows up?
I will.
Okay, very well.
Nor do I, but I will let you know.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll start with public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who would like?
Real quick, do we need to call a roll of the Design Review Board?
I was told we did not.
Okay, nope, we do not.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to the Planning Commission on items other than what's on the agenda tonight? If not, then we'll move to the Consent Calendar. Is there anybody on the Planning Commission that would like to pull an item from the Consent Calendar? Is there anybody from the public that would like to pull any items from the Consent Calendar? That being the case, can I get a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
Approval.
Can I get a second? I get a roll call.
Commissioner Dubin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sadler?
Yes.
Commissioner Whiten?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem Goldman?
Yes.
Chair Kellenberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Okay, in that case, we're going to move on to public hearings. And we have no public hearings tonight, so we're going to move on to other business. Item 6.1 is our singular item for public other business tonight, and it will be a discussion on design review, protocols and procedures between both the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board in a joint study session. What we're going to do is we're going to start with a staff presentation. And then we'll have, after the staff presentation is complete, we'll have questions from the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board. After which, those questions are answered by staff. We will open it up for a public comment. And then after public comment, we will have general discussion and deliberations and give direction to the staff. So with that overview of kind of our flow of events, I will hand it over to staff to give their presentation.
Thank you, Chair Kellenberg. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and Design Review Board members and members of the public. I'm Wendy Jung, Principal Planner, and I will be introducing Agenda Item 6.1. So for this evening's joint study session, we will receive a presentation from the city's consultant, JKA, and they will be providing an overview and initial recommendations for the development of single and two-family objective, sorry, residential objective design standards. There will be an opportunity for the public to provide input, followed by discussion and direction from both the Commissioners and the board members. To give you some background on the effort, the City Council awarded a contract to de novo planning group for the preparation of a comprehensive zoning code update in October of 2024. They also then expanded the scope of services in July of 2025, and this essentially placed priority or early priority on adopting objective design standards as well as updating parking standards with the assistance of sub consultants JKA as well as Kittleson, respectively. Since then, the consulting team has completed foundational work, which includes reviewing existing documents, conducting site visits, gathering parking occupancy data, and also preparing a public participation plan. They've also been working closely with the Ad Hoc Committee, which consists of council members Mark Orgill and Bob Whelan. On the slide before you is a timeline that I just wanted to provide for the benefit of everyone. The comprehensive zoning code effort is anticipated to take approximately 26 months with completion in summer of 2027. So this timeline provides a roadmap essentially for how we're going to be moving from early research through public engagement as well as draft development and ultimately adoption. Today's discussion corresponds to the second phase, which is highlighted with the green marker here on the timeline, and this is for fall of 2025. And it will help guide the next set of deliverables that will be for the objective design standards. It's important to note that we are still in the preliminary stages of the effort, and there will be several opportunities for review as well as input along the way. So the question probably that everybody's asking is why design, why objective design standards? And so for recent state housing laws that have been enacted, these limit the local authority in order to deny or modify certain residential projects that are based on subjective design considerations. The state law now requires the use of objective design standards for certain projects, and these are defined as standards that involve no personal judgment and are uniformly verifiable by clear, by a clear external benchmark. So some of Laguna Beach's existing design review standards or criteria are subjective, and so this means that they can no longer be relied upon to ensure that new development is compatible with the existing neighborhoods when state streamlining does apply. So developing objective design standards will allow the city not only to preserve local design control, but also comply with state law and also maintain Laguna Beach's distinct architectural character. The city is approaching objective design standards essentially in two phases. So on the slide before you, Phase One would address basic forms such as height, setbacks, and massing. It uses a concept that we have called a box inside a box. So hope you enjoy that house in the box. As currently proposed by staff, projects meeting objective limits such as limited to one story, not to exceed 16 feet, and with greater setbacks than those required by the underlying zone, those may be eligible for ministerial review. No architectural details are included within Phase One. The goal is essentially to quickly adopt core standards, and these Phase One standards were included in the Design Review Efficiency Ordinance, which the City Council recently considered at their meeting last night. The City Council ultimately requested minor revisions to the draft Design Review Ordinance and also directed staff to submit it to the Coastal Commission for preliminary feedback and then also to bring it before the Planning Commission for consideration and formal recommendation. They also will be advancing both the urgency and non-urgency ordinance versions of the efficiency ordinance for the Planning Commission as well as the City Council's consideration. For Phase Two, this would focus more on the architecture, the neighborhood, character, and style guidance. So today's study session is related strictly to Phase Two. It's envisioned that architectural style as well as character standards will be illustrated, they'll be easy to use, and they'll be based on a neighborhood style map to ensure there's context-sensitive design. So the purpose of today's study session is to review JKA's neighborhood character analysis, their architectural style research, as well as their preliminary recommendations for the Phase Two objective design standards development. This session is critical for gathering early input and identifying the city's priorities for this effort. Looking ahead, JKA will also develop an administrative draft of the objective design standards for internal review, and this will include, as I had mentioned previously, a detailed architectural character and style standards. It'll include illustrations and zoning text, and also a design checklist with style options. In spring of 2026, there will be additional study sessions that'll be held with both decision-makers and including the public in order to review this draft. After incorporating feedback, there will be a public review draft that will be released, and then two public hearings are anticipated in summer of 2026. And this is before essentially the final adoption of the objective design standards in late summer. So in closing, the objective design standards are essential to preserve local design control and also while meeting the state's requirements. So your direction today will not only shape these standards that guide the future residential development in Laguna Beach, but also, so staff's recommendation this evening is that the Planning Commission as well as the Design Review Board receive a presentation and recommendations from the city consultant, JKA, regarding the development of the single and two-family residential objective design standards, receive public input as well as provide direction as appropriate. As we move into the main portion of tonight's study session, we're joined by our project consultants from JKA, John Kaliski and Ami Bot, who will be presenting an overview of their findings, discuss prevailing architectural styles across our neighborhoods in Laguna Beach, and share preliminary recommendations to help guide the development of the Phase Two objective design standards. Also, along with us today, we have from de novo planning group, Ashley Broadkin and Mia Yuan. So with that, I'd like to invite John and Ami to begin their presentation. Thank you.
Hey. Hello, Commissioners, Board members. Thanks for having us today. I will wait until the slide deck is up to get started, but we're really looking forward to hearing your feedback on our existing conditions report where we've kind of taken the time in the last two-ish months to learn about the city, read some of the existing documents that are here, listen to staff and hear what they have to say, and we've prepared this report as a way of kind of summarizing our findings, and we would really love to hear your input on that, so. Okay, so this is our existing conditions report. Do you want me to just keep telling you when to go to the next slide? Is that the best way to go about doing this? Perfect. Or do you want, I was like, I don't want to force you to. Thank you. Yeah. Sorry. You're fine. Yeah, I'll keep doing it. Okay, so as I mentioned in this report, we've made a bunch of observations, some related to the documents that we've reviewed. We've reviewed projects that have come across the Design Review Board and kind of trying to understand the intent of some of the decisions that were made by the Design Review Board and just character that's favorable and not favorable in the community. We've also looked at different precedents from other cities to try to understand what's happening elsewhere and how that can be used in this city. And then we have a bunch of neighborhood observations that'll kind of lead to our findings, so that's generally what is in this report. So Wendy already spoke a bit about objective design standards, so I won't belabor that, but I think what we tell a lot of people when we talk about objective design standards is thinking about the shall statements versus the should statement. Your shall statement, which is an objective design standard that's measurable and quantifiable, you can say windows shall be recessed a minimum of two inches, you know, and that is measurable, and you can reply yes or no to that, and it uses the shall terminology, but design guidelines, which is contradictory to that, are more subjective and use should as part of that statement. So, you know, buildings should meet the character of the community where it's subjective. You can't really say whether or not that is a yes or no statement. I'll let you.
Oh, you can keep talking.
Oh, okay. No, you're totally fine. And it's generally just a statement that you can't measure quantifiably, you know, it's subjective, it's subject to opinion, and those statements are should statements that we call design guidelines. As we're approaching this project, we have a couple major goals. I think the first is what we're doing right now is exploring and defining what Laguna Beach's single-family and two-family architectural character is. We've started doing that on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, as you'll see as we go through this presentation. The second thing, which we're also doing right now, is we want to make sure that we're engaging with decision-makers and staff to kind of understand what the expectations are for us, what your aspirations are for the community, and how we can kind of translate that into our third goal, which is preparing objective design standards for single-family and two-family developments. Those do include hillside standards as well. Wendy also already spoke of the project timeline, but we wanted to mention that at the end of, you know, next summer, which is, you know, in fall 2026, we hope to have a standalone document for the objective design standard. So while this is part of the comprehensive zoning code update, there will be an official document by the end of this, and that this isn't the only time we hope to come to you with information. We do have those two study sessions throughout this timeline to make sure that we're getting your feedback throughout the process and not just at the beginning or at the end, and to make sure that that's incorporated as we go through this project. A note on applicability, we are looking at single, or we're looking at zones that allow for single-family and two-family development, so that's your R1 zone and R2 zones naturally, but your R3 and some of your hillside zones also require or permit single-family development as well as some zones in the downtown specific plan and other related specific plans. I think what's important to note is that with the state passing SB9, Senate Bill 9, any project that permits Senate Bill 9 would be subject to these standards. So there are a lot of zones in here that would allow SB9 projects, and those would be subject to these standards. So we've looked at a bunch of different documents. The Landscape and Scenic Highways Resources document was particularly useful to us because it already went through and identified Laguna Beach as distinct neighborhoods, and we wanted to use that logic as we were looking at neighborhoods on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis to make sure we're kind of being compatible with, you know, the research that's already been done on the landscape side and trying to relate it to architectural character. We also looked at the Historic Resources element. There's a lot of language about particular architectural styles within that element. I mean, they mentioned craftsman, bungalow, beach cottage, period revival, modern, eclectic as six styles in Laguna Beach. I think as we've done our research and we've started to ask these questions, I think things that we hope that you would think about and perhaps respond to at the end of the presentation are whether these six particular styles, which were identified 35 years ago, are still relevant for Laguna Beach. And I think another thing that is straight from this Historic Resources element is a quote that says, "Laguna Beach architecture illustrates the personality that results from a one-of-a-kind interpretation of styles." We found that to be very true as we've done this work, and if Laguna Beach does have one-of-a-kind interpretations of style, how can a particular architectural style be defined as we go through this process? So those are questions that we've begun asking as we've gone through this. We also took a look at the land use element. I think it's important that the work that we're doing is aligned with the visions that you guys have in your general plans. We wanted to make sure we review that, and there's language on this slide that kind of relates to things that would be relevant to us about, you know, special development standards to address neighborhood-specific development impacts, sufficiently protecting public views, village atmosphere, the downtown. These are phrases that we're taking into consideration to make sure that we're in alignment with the general plan. We also looked at development standards. The city has prepared a matrix that kind of highlights the main development standards that are relevant to this exercise. And it makes us question as we go through this process if there are particular development standards that already exist that maybe need to be tailored as we're talking about design-specific standards. You know, the things like lot coverage, gross floor, yeah, setbacks are more of the Phase One conversation that Wendy was speaking about, but there are standards that relate to chimneys, patio stairs, terraces, whether those elements need to be architecturally specific as we move forward in this exercise. We also looked at the city's design guidelines. This comes back to the should versus shall, as I was saying before. Wendy had mentioned that there's a lot of subjective language. That language really does come from the design guidelines. There are a lot of should statements about how things should be, but they don't express those ideas in a way that we can measure objectively. And one of the things that we can go through as we do this exercise is take the design guidelines and rewrite them, or we have an opportunity to rewrite them in a way where the subjective language becomes more objective, so really adding that level of detail into it, if that is the direction that we are told to go into. And then I'll pass it to John. John's going to talk about projects.
Okay, so the thing that's challenging for us is that the city has standards. Our friends over here are working on standards, and we're really concentrating on character and identity to a certain degree and how that gets introduced in order to introduce a higher level of quality, particularly on projects where you aren't able to go through the nuanced process that you're going through right now, which would be something like an SB9 project. So we did go out and we did look at a lot of projects, and we also looked at projects that the city told us were exemplary, that had gone through the process and were successful. And what we found interesting about those projects was that, taken as a whole, what we saw was a lot of broken-down massing. We saw a lot of varied roof expression, sometimes with articulated eaves with details associated with them. We saw larger overhangs on a lot of the contemporary architecture. We saw a clear progression between public to semi-private to private space. What seemed to mark a lot of the better projects, and this is just some of the examples that we had, was that you saw a lot of sequencing of space from the street to the sidewalk to the yard to the entry and then to the house itself. And it was very, very clear that this type of articulation of the progression was quite important. While you can't say that there's an explicit idea about color, there does seem to be a lot of light beige and earth-colored and colored tones, a certain amount of roof contrast. As I mentioned a moment ago, designed perimeter fencing and walls, a lot of attention paid to the way you move from landscape to the building itself. And then there was always, and this is what Ami was getting at, a consistent second layer of detail, trellises, chimneys, planes moving back and forth, bay windows, bracket details, et cetera. But in reality, we couldn't say that the new architecture was explicitly of a style. Like, if you look at these examples right here, we could probably have a very rich discussion about the styles that the buildings are derived from, but a lot of the newer buildings are influenced by traditions without necessarily being mimicking of those traditions. We also looked at controversial projects. Staff took us on a tour and showed us projects that had been challenging. I also spent some time listening to Design Review Board meetings and other meetings of projects to get a flavor of the type of discussions that neighbors were bringing to the decision. to get a flavor of the type of discussions that neighbors were bringing to the decision-making bodies when projects were controversial. And what I at least found when I listened to these meetings was that character in and of itself and style in and of itself really wasn't the issue that was talked about. In fact, quite honestly, in the meetings that I listened to, and you obviously listen to a lot more than we're ever going to be able to listen to, but in the ones that we were pointed to, the subjects really were size, mass, bulk, setback areas, view equity and privacy issues. We felt, or I felt, that I was surprised at how poor the depictions of context and views were in all of the proposals that we saw. It was surprising to me that most of the time, the only thing illustrated was the building itself with very, very little depiction of what was around it and thereby making a lot of the conversations in public a sort of he said, she said type of context. And even when there were explicit complaints about a house being too close to a new house, the architect and the applicant would barely draw the house next door. And as an architect, I understand why you would do that, but it makes the conversation a little bit more difficult. In the design review board, as I said, there were very few conversations that were explicitly aesthetic, though you could say that if you look at aesthetics in the most holistic sense, it is about mass, bulk, scale, you know, all of those types of things. But remember this distinction that we're artificially making here, which overlays on top of it. Our specific task as consultants was to say, we know we want a second layer and we know we want it to be about the uniqueness of Laguna Beach. Is there something that we can identify that begins to add that additional quotient? So in that sense, we also took a look at what other cities do. And we spent the most time on three cities that we felt in some way were interesting because they either were obsessed with their history or they were in a coastal location. Interestingly, we looked all the way up and down the coast of California to see if we could find any ideal ordinances or model ordinances, and we didn't. Like, the only places we found ordinances that were explicit about style and character were in places like downtown Santa Barbara, which all of you I'm sure are familiar with, where they do have an explicit style standard. There are explicit style standards in Santa Fe, but because it wasn't a coastal city, we didn't really look at Santa Fe. But in general, we couldn't find anything. And the city that, I mean, obviously, we only had a certain amount of time, but the city that we thought was most interesting was Delmar, where there are six single-family zones. There are very similar conversations to the type that you have here in Laguna Beach about new architecture. Interestingly, there are no specific character or style requirements in that city, but there is design review for all single-family homes. There's a very rich, perhaps a bit more robust process for the ability for there to be minor approvals for minor projects so that they don't gum up, if you will, the public works and the public discussions. But what was most interesting in looking at it to us was that there were a lot of really fairly good, at least from our point of view, standards and guidelines for views. Now, we're not explicitly necessarily looking at views on our side of the equation, but it did seem that they had invested a lot of time and energy to try to get some of the view conversations under control in a more standardized way. I know that you have very healthy conversations about that, but if you look at their guidance or their standards versus your standards, theirs have a few more layers on them. So Delmar was interesting, but it really didn't deal with style per se. City of South Pasadena, we looked at because they're very obsessed about history, about the character of individual buildings. But interestingly enough, while they are going through robust conversations in three single-family zones, in the zone that's most controversial in that city, which is a fourth zone, they go lot by lot and they literally define side yards and front yards and things like that, lot by lot. So it's like the typical city in your city is not unusual. In this regard, would say, okay, you have a five-foot side yard. Well, in South Pasadena, this one has a four foot, this one has a six foot, this one has an eight foot, this one has a four foot. And it's over 1,000 or 850 lots that they've gone in this one zone, which happens to be a very, very, it's some type of a historic preservation zone. But they've taken the time to go lot by lot so that people know exactly what is going to be expected of them. And they, I think they've done that because they wanted to get rid of some of the conversations that they were having where people would come forward and say, well, we don't think that setback is big enough or or whatever. But there are no, even though there's a very rich tradition of architectural 1920s architecture there, there's no specific character and style requirements. And in fact, while they encourage character based upon tradition and the context and historical structures, their guidelines explicitly tell you to distinguish your building from traditional styles and not to mimic it, which raises a really interesting issue if you're trying to deal with style because in some ways it works as long as you have a strong design review board that can have a good conversation with the applicant. I think it becomes more difficult if you're saying, well, we want architecture that's informed by Spanish Revival styles, but you're not allowed to mimic anything. So they're still working within a design review board context. I think if they were to all of a sudden get an SB9 project, a lot of the stuff that they're trying to do would vaporize. So we were struggling to find a city that went all the way, and we ultimately did find one. It's Coral Gables, Florida, where there are absolute explicit style mandates. Not only do you have to work in a style that the city basically considers to be appropriate for its setting and for its history. In this case, they call out colonial, Venetian, Mediterranean, Italian, French, Bahamian, et cetera. But you are required to show how you are explicitly utilizing a known precedent that has already been built. So mimicry, in essence, unlike South Pasadena where it's kind of rejected, is embraced. And it's very, very rigorous. And they're, and they have very, very good, actually, all things considered, style standards, which basically tell people, well, if you're working in this style, you have to do this, you have to do this, you have to do this. So this kind of presents a range. And when we thought about this range, we then went out and spent quite a bit of time moving around the neighborhoods that Ami was talking about in Laguna Beach and trying to see what would we learn. And before she goes through it, when we started the project, what we thought we were going to try to find as we went through these neighborhoods was clusters of buildings that were similar. Like, maybe there'd be a street with all Spanish Revival, or there'd be a street with all beach cottages, or there'd be a neighborhood that was made much more of one thing than another thing. And that would begin to give us clues. And I think what we found, I'm going to let, our findings, let at least let Ami describe it.
I think the term that was explained to us and a term that we've come to really relate to is Laguna Beach is eclectic. As I'm going to flip through these slides, we went on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis to kind of understand what styles exist. And in our observed styles, we've learned that there isn't a particular style that relates to a particular neighborhood or a particular street that relates to a particular style. These are all photographs that we're taking. And the observed styles, as you'll see in North Laguna, there are at least 10 different things that we've just pointed out. And the names that we've come to describe them may even start sounding a bit unusual because as we've learned, some of the buildings themselves, yet alone relating to other buildings, the buildings themselves don't have one particular architectural style. You'll have components of buildings, you know, roofs that are a particular style and then the base of the building, that's a completely different style, or an entry that relates to a third style. And you're starting to create these kind of Frankenstein moments of buildings and.
But good Frankenstein.
Right, good Frankenstein. It's not an insult in any way. It's, it's just the fact that these buildings are very hard to identify as one particular architectural style. And I'm just flipping through these slides so you can kind of get the gist of all of the photos that we've taken and realized. And it ends up being a lot, you know? You see a lot of the same styles in a lot of different neighborhoods, but the fact that there isn't anything defining is one of our major findings that we're, we're realizing as we're going through this exercise. And because of that, I'm going to get to this slide.
So you want me to do this?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're challenged, we're challenged. And actually, this photograph was of all the photographs that were taken. I guess there were four of us or three of us who at various times went through the neighborhoods, was the one that I thought was most exemplary of what our challenge is, which is here's a house. In many ways, it's broken-down massing. It's got a rich sequence from the street to the entry. But when you really start looking at the house, you'll see that it has kind of a mid-century, almost Eusonian, Frank Lloyd Wrighty Eusonian deck. It's got a kind of pyramid, traditional roof line. It's got an arts and crafts entry. It's got, I don't know, almost colonial-type detailing along the fence. So it's a mishmash in a good sense. And so what we thought was that in the end, there's no individual style that's overwhelmingly characteristic that we could at least, and this is why we want to talk to you tonight. We couldn't find anything other than the eclecticism. It's good eclecticism, but it would be hard-pressed for us to say, okay, so therefore let's use this and just call it a day. There's a lot of non-rigorous, in the good sense, use of architectural style. You see architects, designers, homeowners, et cetera, doing things well within a variety of different types of genres. In the newer hillside neighborhoods, they indeed are a bit less quirky and more contemporary. But in our conversations with staff, we've also been told that people will nevertheless come into those neighborhoods, and we saw it ourselves, and all of a sudden want to do a traditional Tuscan-style house. As someone who's studied this, what I would basically say is what you really seen in Laguna Beach is that people build over the decades what's popular in the decade in which they're building in. And in any given decade, there's a lot of stuff that's popular, sometimes more, sometimes less. But it's hard to basically identify something. So we began to ask ourselves the question, okay, if a project comes forward and we know it's going to be a ministerial project, like an SB9 project, how would you guide them with character and identity standards that are measurable and quantifiable so that in some way it relates to a larger, to the larger context and also sits on top of these more standardized design standards that have to do with basic breakdowns of massing and stuff like that? And what we thought is, well, you could still develop style groupings. The style groupings themselves would be based upon an understanding that there are certain traditions that you see over and over again in the city. But rather than lead you to explicit architectural expression, they would preclude it, but they would allow you room to move flexibly within it. So in an instance of that, and it's the easiest one for me at least to think about, would be the Spanish Revival. Within the Spanish Revival, you have characteristic roof types. You have characteristic use of materials. You have characteristic, here's a good example of it, you know, certain types of things having to do with the way the roof hits the wall, the types of materials that are utilized, the types of colors. And you could write menus in that group for all of these things and say, as long as you're within, you pick a group, as long as you're within the menu of this, you know, you can make it work without necessarily telling the person they have to do it as a Spanish Revival Monterey, because even within that, there's a tremendous amount of flexibility. So some of the styles that we did absolutely see within the city, there is a clear examples of arts and crafts that are expanded to shingle and bungalow styles within the city. There's clear Spanish Revival, which runs the gamut from Monterey to other types. You have Cottage Storybook and Tudor, which is quite honestly all over the place in terms of all the different influences that people are picking up on. Sometimes this is even the hand-built stuff from the 1920s and '30s that people developed. You have period styles, which are characteristic to the '30s, 20s and '30s. Sometimes it, it, it goes towards some of the cottage styles. Sometimes it goes, there's French influences or English influences. You have minimal traditional with style overtones on top of it, which is typical from the '30s all the way through the '50s. Some of those have vernacular, farmhouse vernacular elements on them. Sometimes they get a little bit more colonial. But I think what's interesting is, is that you have a sort of range of material uses there that would be different than in the, say, Spanish Revival grouping. You have beach cottage, which really just refers to a certain degree to very informal architecture, which kind of picks up certain types of vernacular influences that in terms of the materials that were available when those buildings were being built. And so like, a lot of these can be related back to certain types of agricultural buildings that were being built at the time and vernaculars that local carpenters and people would know how to pile together. And then you sort of have a whole range of sort of contemporary from mid-century to modern to post and beam, which get a lot more eclectic in terms of the type of roof expressions and amount of glazing that they have and things like that. And then, of course, there's the challenge of the contemporary, which actually can't really be described to some extent because it's constantly changing. Like, next year's contemporary is going to be, to a certain degree, different than this year's contemporary. So what we're bringing to you tonight is basically some findings, which is, there's a lot of great stuff here. It's very eclectic. There are certain styles that are used. But rather than, as a first flush at the exercise, what we're suggesting is maybe the way to get at this is to, for the projects that are ministerial, is to suggest some generalized groups that relate to the varying types of contexts that you see here but are done in such a way that people have flexibility as applicants and designers to work within those traditions creatively. So, you know, they might choose the arts and crafts group or they could choose the Spanish Revival group or the storybook group, whatever. But they'd have choices within that. And then within those groupings, there'd be menus that they would have to pick from in terms of additional layers of detail, color groupings, material groupings, percentage of materials allowed, et cetera. So that's one way of approaching it. But I guess our question back to you tonight is, okay, is our understanding reasonable? Are there places in the city where, which we didn't see, which we misunderstood, where maybe a different type of interpretation would make more sense? What would you like to see? Like, where are you starting from in terms of what you'd like to see to be measurable and quantifiable? As Ami said at the beginning, and I think as Wendy said, we're at, in essence, all we've done in the last two and a half months is we've tried to create a snapshot and an understanding of what we're seeing. But we really do need to hear from all of you to enrich that and to move us in a direction so that when we do come back to you with a draft of this document, hopefully it will come as close as possible to meeting your expectations and aspirations in its first draft. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's very interesting and well done. I really appreciate it. It's really interesting to hear your insights on the place that we've lived in for decades and somebody fresh coming in and trying to diagnose it. What I'd like to do is not so much have us try and answer your questions right now. I think that comes later. Right now, I'd like for the design review board and the planning commission to focus on asking them questions, any questions that you have. And then we'll go to the public and then we'll come back for a general discussion. So in order to organize the questions, why don't we just start at one end and work our way down? Shall we start with the design review board? And if you, and you don't have to have questions, right? But if you have them, let's work, let's, let's lay them out there.
And Chair, if it's okay, there might be some questions that come up, like as someone brings up a topic to lay on.
Yeah, but let's try and get through everybody first and then come back around if there's a second, if there's a second round.
So the voice in the sky, I don't have questions, but I do have comments and suggestions.
Yeah, and we're going to hold off on those right now, if that's okay. We're going to, we're going to have questions, right now we're doing questions. Then we're going to hear from the public and then we're going to come back and have comments. comments.
So email about a Design Review Board. So I've got a question, probably more for city staff. I think there was a note that said the initial review was going to go before internally. Does that include the board here and the Planning Commission?
So the administrative draft would be for internal staff review. And then we would bring that forward with additional study sessions with the commission, the board, and possibly the council.
Okay, great. So there'll be another review in this format or a different format, like a working format?
I think it would be similar to this format, so another study session.
Okay. And then another general question. So is there a way to address the should versus shall? Because what I, what I wanted to hope to do was to not include language that would limit the property rights of the owner to develop a home. So there, there is a subjectivity that's currently written in the, in the home, in the code that's very clear, which takes it to the DRB process. What I would really hope to do would, would be to not utilize the word shall to limit the current property rights that are on there, because I think it would open up the city to potential liabilities. But more importantly, I would prefer that that language give the option and also an alternative to go through with the DRB and planning hearing at a future date. I don't know if that's something that's being considered, but I would love for that to be considered because if, if there's no pathway for that property and they're stuck in this box, it would be great for them to be able to jump into a DRB process in a, in a subjective manner.
So, so is there a question in there?
Yeah, is it being, is it being considered? Because it's right now, I think if we put everything into a box, I think we limit the development to other people, yeah.
Quick, did you want to get that?
Yeah, I could, sorry, can you hear me? So Ashley Brodkin, I'm the project manager with De novo. So the idea with this is this is one path that would be able to be taken. We would make it very clear that there are multiple paths that a developer could come in, so it would not infringe on property rights. It would be if you want that certainty of the process, if you're an SB nine project, if you want a more ministerial path, you would still have to go through and get the coastal permit, so it wouldn't be entirely ministerial. But you would be able to use these design guidelines to bypass. If you want to come in and have outside-the-box architecture, if you want to do something unique, you can definitely still go through the DRB process, have that review. So it would not limit, it would give you another pathway, another option that would also be in line with what the state requirements are. So it's just really giving another pathway, but it's not curtailing the one. And as part of the overall comprehensive zoning code update, that will all be included to make very clear that there are multiple paths you can take to get you to your end result.
That's great. That definitely answered my question. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate it. I'm sort of not completely clear on this whole style concept. So how do you define, how would you define style groupings for like remodels? Because if you're, most of, a lot of what we get is not fresh start, so it's all remodeling. So, I mean, if I was going to ask you a question, I would say, give me the wording to say mass and scale is wrong and without saying should or using the right verbiage and view equity has not been achieved. If you can give me the proper legal terminology that makes that fly through the guidelines of California state law, I would love you forever. And that would be very helpful. That's what I need. Is that bad? Did I ask a bad question?
And, and so that is kind of the elusive objective for which we are trying to get to. No, that is not an easy answer. That is why the eight great minds up here, two in the sky, and eventually the city council are all here to weigh in and hopefully get us there in a way that's acceptable to you all, the public, city council, and kind of improves the process. So I know that's not a very-
I get that. I'm just feeling like, okay, it's, it's like, I love knowing there's all these different styles, but we're an eclectic town. That's the way it's going to be. It's always going to be like that. We love that about this town. So, and I know if we're going to start doing, you know, box in a box, conceptual, maybe help process it through zoning quicker or help it not have to come to DRB, that's great, great, great. But our big obstacle is that, you know, elephant in the room kind of thing that I think is where all of the emphasis should go. Coral, Coral Gables, Delmar Guidelines for Views. What specifically were their guidelines? Do you, are they, can I find them quickly? And, and they're, and they're very specific? Are they percentage-wise? Are they, you know, is, is it, what's the biggest emphasis on the Delmar views? Because that's sort of one of the biggest things we have here. Sorry.
Not sure I can answer it well off the top of my head because I looked at it probably six weeks ago at this point.
Okay.
I think that what I was struck by was just that it's, it's a longer, more nuanced, with more rules in it, version of what you are doing already here in the types of conversations that you have. It's setting out the parameters in a clear way so that the starting point of what people have to do is more upfront, right in front of them.
So you feel like it provided what the state law required and it also protected views of the homeowner when you read it? Or do you feel like it was still super nuanced and would-
No, I didn't think it was super nuanced. I just thought it was good in terms of what state law allows or doesn't allow in terms of property rights. I didn't read it with that filter. I read it more with the filter of having gone and looked at your zoning requirements and you have a view. There's a section of your zoning code that, that talks about views as well.
View equity.
Yeah, exactly. And I felt that they were just a little clearer in terms of how they approached it.
Okay.
But I think, again, remember, we're, we're in a sort of, we're going to have to work closely with Ashley and De novo to figure this out because some of this is, is about things like view equity, scale. You know, remodeling is a really interesting question that you brought up, which we haven't necessarily thought about yet, but there are some approaches that you can take towards remodeling for a project that at least hypothetically is ministerial. Meaning if somebody wants to, like, the easiest way to say it is fine. You can write a set of rules that say if you're doing a remodel, it has to be within the given architectural character of the building that you're working with. And architectural character is designed by these factors, material use, opening proportion, roof slope, roof material. And you can lay that menu out and say, you have to, window type, you have to use all of these elements. I'm not going to comment on whether or not that can ever be a ministerial project in the city of Laguna Beach at this moment, because I myself don't really understand yet. I mean, in SB nine, it's very clear. Staff gets those projects and staff ultimately is going to say, yes, they comply or no, they don't comply, and it's not going to go to the public. But I, at this point, we're way too early to know, like, what happens with a remodel. Is it a tiny remodel? Is it a big remodel? I will say in Delmar, their rules for what gets administrative review only, as long as you stay within certain limits, at least right this second, are a little bit more expansive than they are here. But then you're also working right now on an ordinance, which is creating some additional pathways that in some way begin to move you closer in that direction.
Okay. And I'll just ask one more question. I'd like to hear what else has to say. Are you looking to rewrite, rewrite the guidelines then to properly speak to the shall, should component? Is that your, is that you or is that?
No, that's us. I, I think Ami brought that up. That is an absolute opportunity where we can spend a lot of time with the guidelines and try to literally build a comparison and say, this is the way it, it works as a should. This is the way it would work as a shall. We're not 100% sure that's what we want to do yet, but it may be that there's enough that's good in there that it makes sense for us to concentrate quite a bit of energy on that.
Okay.
But we can do that.
Thank you. And then Chair, it's hard for me because so much of this to me isn't, is to ask questions. It's, it's a broader conversation. So, I mean, we'll keep rolling.
We'll come back around.
It's kind of-
Plenty of opportunity.
Because I have like a one-liner, but I'm going to let you guys go.
So for starters, I really want to thank you guys for tackling this project. It's an important one for the city and it's one that we need to get right. And I think you guys have the right starting point as well. The presentation that you guys put forward is a really good testament to you guys really trying to spend some time in our community and trying to learn it and try to identify elements that makes you Laguna Beach unique, which is probably why, you know, in the 80s, they really came up with a lot of these concepts in the Design Review Guides. And I appreciate, you know, recognizing the complexity from then until now and what we have to kind of accomplish. Now, my question, I guess, for the presentation was, is kind of more centered around the zones. I think it's great that you broke out the city into 13 zones. But one part that I think might be missing is some of the specific plan areas within the residential scope, like Diamond Crestview, Three Arch Bay, Sarah Thurston Park, which is its own animal of itself, let alone Arch Beach Heights as well. Those probably should be in their own kind of buckets that kind of follow within those plans. Irvine Cove also has very scripted criteria within their own HOA that they're almost their own little animal. Same with, no, not, over there, Smithcliffs is almost probably a better bucking, bucket of those two areas. Just in reference, South Laguna probably needs to be broken up into a couple more areas. The Village specifically down there, there's a lot more stuff that was developed in the county under different jurisdictions that it creates some different elements. But as you get up in the hills, there's definitely different building styles, some, you know, more significant structures and just different balances. Not to mention the stuff that's behind like Gelson's or what was Gelson's or CBS has its own kind of style within those houses as well. So I just, I guess the question was, are you guys open to kind of exploring more, more zones and characteristics to define the city?
Absolutely. If, a lot of those neighborhoods we did go to, but some of them I'm not explicitly knowledgeable about off the top of my head, though maybe Ami or Sophie who worked in our office-
There's people here that have lived here their whole life that won't know some of these areas.
But if, if you write down a list of the neighborhoods and you give it to staff and they give it to us, we'll come back down and we'll look at them explicitly.
Some of that's coming to reference from the last seven years of-
And it would be great to get that sooner than later because we'd love to see it.
I think from a starting, that would be my initial question and I appreciate that being added.
Hi, I'm, I'm Tom Gibbs in Design Review. Yeah, I appreciate your, your presentation. I have a couple of questions. The focus of your presentation is on style. And you're trying to come up with styles within these various zones. On Design Review, style's important. And it may be important in coming up with objective standards to deal with the SB nine and SB 450 and also the ADU law. But it's not a huge issue, as you might think, for Design Review. Our issues, and I'm coming around to a question, are mass and scale, neighborhood compatibility, which is more in terms, I think you kind of acknowledged it, and more in terms of mass and scale. So I think they're very close, if not, in fact, the guideline for neighborhood compatibility includes mass and scale. View equity, which means preserving views. Given the topography and the closeness of the houses, that is probably the most, you know, most important, maybe tied for the next one among the residents and also by the applicants in trying to get the most value from their home is getting that view, that all-important ocean view or hillside view. And the next one's privacy. Those are the things that we deal with primarily on Design Review. And we review all the single-family and multifamily, you know, two, two house or two-home households. So my question is, are you like looking at style to come up with an objective thing that somebody can build on an SB nine lot? Or are you going to try to, are you looking at folding in and trying to come up with some objective standards that avoid Design Review for those other items? And it also provides protection to the public or for the neighbors of these SB nine projects that give an objective protection, if you will, to mass, scale, privacy, view equity? So that's, that's my chief question. Because to me, the most important thing, if we're going to try to provide protection against the onslaught of state objective, objectivity laws, we need to focus on and see whether we can come up with objective standards into those areas. Or at least, you know, a box within a box, where we come back and you do this, you don't have to go Design Review or Subjective Review and require all SB nine and ADU projects to comply with. So are you considering those other things?
Well, I think you've well described what we're, what we've both found and what we're considering, at least as the way we presented it to you. There are two different layers to this. I think I did, and Ami did, try to describe that. Well, let me step back from that. In the conversations that the city is having, I think there were some questions that came up about to what degree can we get another layer of detailing in these buildings? And I think there was a natural kind of like movement to saying, well, the most obvious way to do that is just say, they have to be this. And then you can describe what this is and overlay that on top of whatever the massing and the setbacks and the view equity issues are. I think what we found was that it's not that easy to do that and maintain Laguna Beach character, because Laguna Beach character is much more nuanced than that. But the answer is yes, we can absolutely, I think, do what you described. And not only, I mean, I don't know that we'll, I mean, it's hard because when you have these houses sitting next to each other, obviously it's emotional to a certain degree. I mean, sometimes I listen to these things and it's like people are arguing over the end of the world, over two feet in elevation, which quite honestly, you know, when it's built, unless it explicitly blocks a view, it really, people can't perceive it, most people can't. But they do know that it's bigger and, and that's upsetting to them. And you have to be, you have to be empathetic to that because it's change in their environment. So I do think we can do what you're describing, but we're going to have to work closely with them.
Yeah.
And that's what we're going to have to do.
I, I think that, you know, dealing with the styles, there's no one set style in any neighborhood. What drives the style is the mass and scale and the topography. And to some extent, we bring in neighborhood compatibility, but most people who develop here have money and they want to develop something that looks nice. So it's rare that we have a style problem. You know, where the style problem comes in is like an Irvine, you know, track home look. You can kind of see those, but those are rare, far and few between. I think the challenge isn't so much, well, real quick, I just encourage you to be focusing to the extent you can on what the real issues are. And I just don't think it's style. I think it's the other things I talked about. So go ahead.
So Planning Commission, want to start down here?
Jessica?
Oh, Jessica. Well, well, she said she didn't have-
She said she didn't.
Jessica, do you have a question now?
I can form them in the, in the way of a question. I have comments, but I can form the comments in a way that it, it shapes as a question.
Chair, I think we just move on.
Okay, well, let's, let's wait and, and because we're going to, we're going to go through a little bit later and everybody's going to have a chance to comment. So Steve, you want to go first?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Steve. I'm wondering how much, how much you all considered, you know, we have a lot of non-conforming projects that turn into major renovations and we've got the 50% retention rule, where 50% of the home needs to remain, remain standing and you design around the rest. Did you all, did you all look at that as, as a factor and whether that helps or hurts in, you know, formulating a plan going forward?
We haven't looked at that at this point, but you're in essence telling us we should think about it.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that should be a factor because I do think that 50% rule as, as, as we are defining these standards, I, I think in some ways it's kind of foolish because nobody really complies to it and it just creates a lot of headache and extra cost. And in some cases, perhaps some design components that, that are diminished in some way. So I do think that that's something that should, should be considered in, in the review. My second question is historic designation. Did you factor in, and historic, historic designation, I think is also a tricky thing because- historic designation, I think is also a tricky thing, because history is in the eye of the beholder. And, you know, we've had many projects that come forward to us where, where the applicant wants designation or members of the public want designation. And I've always found that to be a, a little bit of a gray area where different people use it to support their different view. Is that something that, that you all had looked into as well? You know, what's, what, what historic designation does and does not do towards design elements?
Oh, sorry. So this is Ashley. The applicability of the objective design standards is right now, the lens we're looking at is new development. It's somebody who is going to either demolish an existing home or to build on an empty lot, as few as there are in Laguna that I know they're here. So those are really the type of projects that this would apply to. So it would be an earlier determination if a project would fit within a certain category, if it was remodel, if it was less than 50% renovation. Those are things we can look at. And when we get to the comprehensive zoning code update, we're going to look at what the processes are for those and how the city would like to go. And we would come back with those questions. But for these standards, these are really looking at new developments. If a project had a historic designation, that would probably not be an applicable use of these standards. That would be its own thing. They would have to meet the Secretary of Interior standards. So that would be looked at a different lens. This is really looking at new construction. Again, it may turn out that some of these do apply to remodels and that will be a decision down the road. But this one right now is really looking at the construction of new, single family and two family dwelling units.
Yeah, I hear you on the historic designation. I do think going back to the, the 50% retention rule, I do think that's something that needs to be looked at because, and I'll use myself an example, our, our house was basically, it was basically a tear down and new construction built within the 50% retention rule. And so I do think, I do think the 50% retention rule should be looked at, evaluated and incorporated into this because it, in many cases, you know, given that, that the value of land and existing structures that have nonconforming components that are grandfathered, a lot of older houses, which are technically remodels are really, are really, are really new builds.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Commissioner Sadler.
Thanks for the presentation. I guess I'm just trying to really wrap my head and make sure I understand kind of the, the whole goal here and what we're aiming for, that these new state laws have, have put the city in a position where it can no longer use subjective design standards for certain projects, certain residential projects. So something has to be done about that. So somebody comes in with a proposal for one of those projects under SB nine or something similar, city's going to need to, to comply with state law on that. So now there's going to be this new process for those type of projects. Are we saying then, once that that, this separate process has been developed, that anybody can opt for that, that pathway, rather than going through the regular design review process?
Sure. And so that, I would say that that's a pretty fair characteristic. I would also add to that, that that's the city council directive. That's not staff just coming up with this and saying, hey, here's what, here's what, what we think is best. Once again, this is just the, the first step, or at least with you, with you all, it's not the first step in the process. And, and so, yes, I, if that answers your question, I can stop talking now. I can kind of give you some more justifications. As of right now, as I'm sure you are all aware, in a lot of those state housing laws, there are coastal act savings clauses, other potential arguments that the city may have. Practically, I think that the train is headed in one direction, i.e., we're not sure if the state is going to, maybe the next one's going to explicitly say, hey, there is no coastal act savings clause. So yes, the, the purpose of this is to, is kind of twofold. One, it is a, you know, it's, it's protective of the city. It's, hey, we, we kind of have these on the books such that if that, if that day ever comes, we can point and say, yes, we are totally in compliance. And but once again, it's, 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 it's the first kind of step with, with you all. And there's going to be many more meanings on this, I'm sure.
Okay. And, and if some, somebody opted to go, not go that route and go through the regular design review process, would that remain?
Correct.
Basically unchanged? And our, and our existing design review criteria remain unchanged the way they are?
Yeah. So that's, that's an open question as of right now in terms of what city councils, you know, direction is, do they want to kind of tweak those? Do they want to attempt to try to make those a little bit more objective? But it's safe to say that yes, it would go through a design review process.
And currently, the Planning Commission does design review on certain commercial projects. That would be completely separate from what we're talking about now.
Correct. That would ultimately be a, a discussion for the city council, but what is before you tonight and the purpose of this exercise is geared towards those one and two unit housing projects.
Okay. Because, you know, I agree, and this is going to be kind of a broad, open ended question, but I agree with what Tom Gibbs was saying earlier. I have the benefit of previously being on the Design Review Board, as well as now being on the Planning Commission. So I have experience with the whole process. And, you know, in my experience, it was, it was view equity, privacy, neighborhood compatibility, design articulation, design integrity, that were the main contentious points typically in Design Review Board hearings. And I just ask myself, how in the world can any of those be made objective? They're all the most subjective criterion that, that are there on the Design Review Criteria list. It's, they're all, I mean, view equity is extremely subjective. How, how would that ever be made objective? I just don't, I don't understand. I don't know if you've read through, you know, the current definition of view equity and.
Commissioner, we've got some ideas. So I think when we get into deliberation, we can talk about how we can potentially objectify those. The reason is objectifying those protects the citizens. Because if there is no privacy, view equity considerations for SB nine, it could be really bad for the neighborhood.
Okay. But again, just view equity by itself, you know, when, when we were evaluating view equity and somebody is coming and saying, you know, I object to my neighbor's proposal for their home, it's taking away my ocean view. Well, part of the Design Review Criteria for view equity says, well, what type of ocean view? Is it from a, a primary ceremonial room? Or are you talking about, you know, the view from your little secondary bathroom window? And that would get weighed into the deliberation. Again, pretty subjective. So I don't see, again, I guess we'll wait and we'll see.
Let's, let's wait because they have studied other cities and other cities have figured it out. So that's what we want to learn more about.
Okay.
I was going to say, you've actually hit on one of the differences between your rules and Delmar's. In Delmar, their, their definition of view equity is explicit that it's only from the primary room. And they define it, what a primary room is, whereas in your city, it's a little looser.
So they're going to work on that and come back to us with something.
Okay. And just the last little question I had was, when you were citing the other places that you looked at had a similar process, that whether or not you looked at other Northern California, because I know that Carmel has a design review process.
Not for single family. I mean, they have design review for single family houses, but they don't really tell you much about design per se.
Okay. And I'm not sure, and it's been a while, but when I first got on the Design Review Board, I was looking at what other cities did in terms of their design review process. And I know it was, I looked into Carmel. I know also up in the Bay Area, while not, you know, directly on the ocean, both Sausalito and Tiburon and Marin County also have it. So you may want to consider looking into what they're doing.
We did look at those places. I think the comment you made very early in your questions is really the critical comment, which is that if, to make it really simple, if an SB nine project comes forward, do your existing design standards, are they sufficient to basically shape the project in the direction that you want them to go? And I think the easy answer to that right now is that because the city is relying on a healthy design review discussion, which has been defined as being subjective, which we could have a discussion about if that's really true or not, I would argue that it's not. But nevertheless, that's the way it's defined. You don't have a lot of rules within rules for somebody who's going to be pushing forward a ministerial project. And the easiest way to describe that is exactly the example that I mean, said, there's no discussion in your design standards really about windows. You're relying on the design review discussion and the integrity of the applicant and, and, and the architect to basically know how to detail a window. Now, you can't completely detail windows with design standards, but you can do a lot more than you're doing right now. And, and, and there's some challenges to that, which we've run into in various places. But there's a lot you can still do. And, and, and so that's what, that's what the opportunity is.
And I guess the last question I'd have, and I'm not sure if this is more for city staff or not, but you know, it's a pretty major undertaking we're talking about here in response to these state laws. Has the city tried to determine, you know, what's the potential for these type of projects happening here in Laguna Beach? We, you know, as Laguna Beach is pretty close to being built out. There's not a lot of vacant land or vacant lots or new buildable lots. I'm just wondering, you know, is there, has anybody tried to determine like that we could be seeing hundreds of these projects? We could be seeing half a dozen or we know?
I'll take a stab at that and defer to staff. Maybe not hundreds per year, but the DRB can speak a, a sufficient amount to make this endeavor worthwhile, such that we are receiving it.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Welcome to Laguna. My question, I think, was answered. Commissioner Sadler asked the question, and I know I have a, I have way more comments than questions, but we rarely deal with residential properties unless they're in a commercial zone. So it's, I mean, the time I've been on the planning, it's maybe a couple or three. That's been six plus years. So my question was just simply going to ask, is any of this ever going to roll into a commercial projects that we deal with, you know, because we're really not dealing with residential at all?
Well, in the broadest sense, if somebody, the state laws allow you to propose, in essence, mixed use projects. So if somebody comes forward in a commercial zone with a project that has a housing element within it is defined under state law, it would automatically, not necessarily within the single family, but somewhere it would fall into that the only way that the city can review it is within an objective design standards context. So if somebody proposed in the future, housing over, a little housing over, you know, commercial project, and they put, and they met those qualifications, it would only be subject to ODS.
So at some point, this may fold into a broader discussion of residential and commercial projects.
So this, there will actually be two sets of objective design standards. The first one we're bringing to you right now is the single family, two family. Part of our original scope of work was a, we were just looking at multifamily and mixed use projects. So we will be coming back with a second set of objective design standards that will focus on those projects. So you will be seeing, and those standards will most definitely be influenced by the work we're doing now. So, but there will be two sets of standards depending on the type of project.
I yield to my fellow commissioners.
Most of the big questions, I think, have been answered. As, as Tom Gibbs said, it's not about style here. I mean, it's such an eclectic place. There's an infinite, there's an infinity of styles. And even to try to categorize them, I, my hat goes off to you, that you were able to kind of corral them into some sort of style groupings. But it's never been the case here that DRB makes decisions based on the style or really on many of the details. Occasionally, the privacy issue comes up, but it really is much more about context. And, and so my question is, is all of the work we're doing here, given the fact that we are mostly a built out city, with likely a bit of redevelopment to occur in the next decade or so, really a defensive, this is all defensive action on our part? We're not trying to re, you know, fine tune our design standards. We have pretty, pretty strong design standards, which I believe are objective for the most part. Others differ on that opinion, but I think they can be objectified. So is what we're doing now a defensive, putting up a defensive shield for us to protect our city?
And so I'll go ahead and try to argue. I think one could, could make that argument. I can't get into the, to the minds of the, of the city council members, nor, nor yours. I would say it's probably twofold. One of it being somewhat a, a defensive and also, you know, attempting to improve and, I shouldn't say that, but attempting to clarify and make the process a bit simpler for these specific subset of projects. Of course, reasonable minds can disagree on whether or not that's, that's, that's the policy or approach we should take. But that's kind of my view, but that's just mine. And it's kind of up to you all.
Okay. To follow up on that, are we trying here to objectify to such an extent that many or any project could just be administratively approved? In other words, are we creating checklists to, you know, create, for a more efficient process in order to objectify the design criteria to the extent that it will, will it be necessary to go through? Is that a goal? Will it be necessary to go through the design review process?
For one subset. Not for everybody, just for one subset. That's, that's, that's.
No, that's not my question. I understand the one subset, but is it going to go, you know, looking ahead, all is, this housing stuff is largely political at this point. And we have a need for housing, but the way it's being driven is very political at this point. And, and the pressure will slack off at some point, but we're still going to need to have these standards in the state in order to get housing built. So as we move forward beyond just this crisis of the SB nine and four fifty and the impacts that it's creating, we need, we're long overdue for some of these, these improvements in our, in our review process. But is the goal, the, the long goal to objectify the whole process?
It's, it's, you're juggling two or three balls at once here because it is right now, today, a subset that we are explicitly going to be able to address. And we're looking for input on how best to address that. And I'm, I'm getting a lot of interesting sort of comments that are going to shape how we approach this. I think for us, the question is to what extent does this work product that we produce, which will apply to a subset, engage the aspirations you have for your community in terms of feel, texture, design? Because I agree completely with, I guess you're, you're not a commissioner, you're a design review, design review. I agree with the commissioner here that fundamentally, what our findings were, without knowing anything about Laguna Beach, is that the vast majority of conversations are about mass, bulk, setback, view equity, privacy. And then there are comments about like, well, maybe this building needs to be a little bit more articulated or, you know, the window proportions don't look good and stuff like that. But it's really that first set that is where most of the energy is spent. And I think that we can work with de novo and get much closer to what you aspire to. And that then will give you a bit more comfort within this state regimen that has been imposed upon every single city, that when a project comes through within that subset, that it will get a little bit closer than it might otherwise to, in some way, reflecting the goals and objectives of the city as represented by you. The question of whether that subset should be expanded to other projects is actually not what we're explicitly here to do. It may be that, you know, staff has to wrestle with that as time goes on.
Right. And so Madam Planning Commissioner, I would add, you know, that's ultimately going to be a decision for the city council with, of course, your guys' input. So if, you know, if, if you guys have strong feelings. So if, you know, if you guys have strong feelings on that, now would be a time during your discussions, sure, but once again, that's going to be a further question, further analysis along down the road, ultimately decided by the city council.
Okay. A final question, which has to do with, is it possible to do what you referred to in, I don't remember the city, where you analyze individual lots on a lot-by-lot basis, and you determine what the appropriate setbacks and so forth are? Under state law, is that possible? In other words, could we, could we, is that, is that a defensive mechanism? Or is that not permitted?
As long as you're able to demonstrate that you've not constrained the ability for someone to achieve the otherwise minimum requirements of SB 9, you can do whatever you want, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I think there's something there that says you have to give people the right to build 800 square feet minimum, you know, as you subdivide these things down. And as long as you can affirmatively demonstrate that you're not constraining the development of housing as per the intent of those laws, that they explicitly give you the right to develop objective design standards on a community-by-community basis.
But on a lot-by-lot basis or not?
I personally think you could do that, but I'd let the city attorney comment on that. I mean, it would be a very big exercise because you'd have to have some type of methodology that reasonably demonstrated that you're not constraining the ability of people to achieve what otherwise is allowed. But I, I think you could make it work.
But wasn't that sample south of, South Pasadena that you referred?
No, that's actually, yeah, no, it's in South Pasadena.
Weren't those already existing homes?
And that law already existed.
Right. So they had those historical homes, especially off of the.
It's not an option here, guys.
No, we don't have the resources.
It isn't worth wasting our time on it. It's just not an option. Our lots are crazy in this town.
So there's one more commissioner that hasn't had a chance to ask his questions. And I'm just going to ask, this has been asked like four times, and I think we all have to ask it our own way to really understand and put a little edge or finer point on it. This exercise is not changing the fundamental design guidelines for Laguna Beach. This is setting an alternative set of guidelines that somebody can choose to use for an expedited approval process. So I think it helps us if we, in our discussion tonight, we understand that, that this discussion is about a, it's a narrow, it's a broad discussion about a narrow subject, which is a single tract of, track of approval that someone can choose to go down. And it doesn't affect all the guidelines forever in Laguna Beach. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
And it would apply, just to be sure, because we're all understanding this, because I think it was a great point, that this special situation, this expedited application process, is not limited to just SB 9 projects or ADU projects. They would have to be available to everybody. Is that right, Patrick?
That is correct.
Thank you.
But I do want to say that what you just said and the way you articulated is what we need to hear tonight, because that's actually a direction.
I want us, I want us to narrow, I mean, I would recommend that we narrow our scope. Otherwise, we'll never get done if we start talking about design guidelines in general and the overall process and how it can be better known. This is about an SB 9 application, and it's a voluntary track that an applicant can take that is a, probably a lower standard potentially of architectural articulation, but we don't know that. That's what we have to kind of figure out. Are there other, now that we've gone around, are there?
But it's not limited to SB 9. So what they're talking about would be available to anyone developing new, a new construction home.
Which could be a lot of.
It could be anyone. We get, I would say between about 40%, maybe 30% to 40% of our projects are new construction.
I think my understanding is that we create a new path, right? We have a path currently that can go to admin review. We have a path that can go to design review. This would create a path for just full-on administrative.
Right. And it would be objective so that you don't get, and I, this is putting aside my own personal feelings about the carve-out, because I think the carve-out is really important for coastal act stuff, but that hasn't been litigated yet. And it was a real question whether we have to objectify everything for SB 9. But assuming we do, this creates an, the goal would be, and I loved your question, the goal would be to come up with a separate path, objectified in accordance with current law, including the CDP coastal resources stuff. Patrick and I have talked about it at length, to come up with a path that would apply to everybody in town, anyone who wants to build a new home, but would be an objective thing to provide protection, this kind of goes to your question, Susan, to provide protection to the neighbors and the town from outrageous SB 9 projects. That's the goal. It's a lofty goal. It's not an easy.
I'd like to get to public testimony as soon as we can. Does anybody have any other specific question? In the commission and board, any additional questions, or can we now open the public hearing? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing, and you each, you'd have as much as three minutes to come up and speak and make sure you put your name on the list before or after you speak.
Morris Kandarian, architect. Thank you. Steve, I sat here for an hour trying to figure out what we were doing and why we were doing it. And my mind was going in all different directions, commercial remodels, South Laguna, mini lots, larger lots. If it's focused on SB 9, that's a whole separate question. My question to this group in their study, which I appreciate and understand the difficulties of a new group coming into town, trying to educate themselves of something that we've educated ourselves for the past 50 years, at least I have, and did they ever look at the design guidelines, the residential design guidelines? It was a 100-page document done in 2010 that was done by an ad hoc volunteer group of designers, architects, and developed and used for many, many years, and directed applicants to use in their development of their projects. And if it hasn't been looked at, it should be, because it's a real education of how to do a, give the city direction on how to direct applicants. Because what I've heard tonight and what I saw was certainly an explanation of all the neighborhoods, which we all know, and some of the examples of extraordinary or exemplary architecture I totally disagree with. In fact, it's a good example of what not to do in the context. But as the architect said, context was, has been ignored on many projects. We do it on our projects. The context of our projects within the community is primary for us. And then, as I think it was Ken that said, view equity. Most of the neighbors and people involved in these projects on, that are objecting to them, they're not objecting to them on mass scale. They use that in order to improve it, view. If the view is preserved, they could care less if it's a pitch roof or a flat roof, or if it's wood siding or stucco, it's irrelevant. But the neighbors and the public who view these projects after they're done, that have nothing to do with view, are critical of what was built because the design was compromised only because of someone's view. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, your questions will be addressed at the end of the public hearing.
I would hope that you would allow some discussion during your deliberations so that those of us in the audience can participate going forward. I was at the planning, at the council meeting last night, and this is much broader than you're talking about. They're doing a design review efficiency ordinance, and this is just part of it. And so it does, has many more implications and many more changes to what we've been doing than just dealing with the styles of neighborhoods. One of the things that it has is expanding the administrative design review. And we've spoken many times, this administrative process makes it impossible to appeal. The staff person who's written the staff report under the person who's making this decision, the person who's making the decision is going to agree with the staff report, approve the project, and the neighbors can only appeal to city council. They can't appeal to the design review board, which is what they should be able to do, to not have to pay $2,500 to bring it to another body. That's just one of the problems with it. And I would say regarding the things we've talked about tonight, the landscape scenic highways resource document lists all these neighborhoods, the ones that he said he needed to get a list of, it's all already in there. Neighborhood compatibility also relates to landscape. We haven't talked at all about landscape. And our neighborhoods without the trees and shrubbery would look pretty barren and pretty ordinary. And we need to include how that landscape can continue to make us neighborhood compatible. The proposal last night with the box, within the box, also has a restriction on landscaping that the shrubs would only be six feet high in the back, four foot high in the front, and no tree could ever be higher than the building. That's how you would get your standardized house approved. That would be deadly. And this all needs to be addressed by this body and the members of the public. So the process is basically being changed. The wording of it is 150 pages of revised verbiage dealing with design review. So I urge you all to go over it paragraph by paragraph, because these changes are, could be very huge. And we need the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Hi, Penelope Millen, president of the Canyon Alliance of Neighborhoods Defense Organization. I've got about five basic categories, and it's going to be impossible for me to say this, so let me just say quickly, the public needs workshops so that we can be interactive and spend a little bit more time working on this. So I hope we're going to get some of those. Speaking of neighborhoods, really quickly, the lines that are shown on the neighborhood maps are not correct for the canyon. For example, it shows the canyon acre, neighborhood stretching out to Big Bend. It doesn't. And the maps, illustrations, and descriptions of use for Sycamore Hills are incorrect. Each of those is incorrect. The maps are wrong. The description of use is wrong. And the illustrations don't show what they say they do. But I do agree with others who have said that seeking to negotiate design review requirement for like neighborhood character via architectural style is a mistake. Neighborhood character is a product of things like history and topography amongst other things. I would analyze a couple of neighborhoods, but I don't have time. And in fact, as we've heard mentioned tonight, right, the design review criteria and neighborhood compatibility specifically talks about the architectural diversity. So we can't go with, this architectural style goes with this neighborhood. We already knew that. The materials we give out to people going to design review already kind of say that. So additional materials to review, the Laguna Canyon Annexation Area Specific Plan. I see that that is listed as part of Title 25, but all that's in Title 25 is a small, dark, badly hand-drawn map and the information about the emergency shelter requirement. So you have to look at the Annexation Area Specific Plan, including Topic 1 and the policies under that, in which rural and small-scale development are a requirement. And then I would also look at the Laguna Canyon Planning Study. The city spent tens of thousands on it. The communities spend hundreds of hours on it. It includes, at the city council's requirement, the definition and illustrations of rural and small scale, and also shows indication is in the canyon where rural, where would be rural and where would be semi-rural, and it includes proposed design guidelines. So thinking about objectivity without relying on those materials is, we're not going to be doing our best. I don't have any time to say this. So the question that was asked in your materials was, are the development standards that should be refined, things that you do need to do? We need to bring the zoning code into alliance with the general plan. And I say that just, and I won't have time to finish this. The land use element describes residential hillside protection as, "This category is intended to promote a balanced management program focusing on the preservation of open space lands and environmentally sensitive areas while allowing for limited residential development." The open space element reiterates that and notes that they put this in the category of, five categories of land use for the purpose of recognizing and preserving valuable open space. What does the zoning code say for the intent and purpose of RHP? "The intent and purpose of this zone is to allow for low-intensity residential development that addresses concerns for public health and safety." Those sound like two different zones.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, there's more, but I think those are important. You can't start with the wrong definition and come up with the right standards.
Anybody else like to come up to the podium and speak?
I would like to object to the SB 9 because I believe that that imposes on the ownership, right? I myself am having issues where there was no due process on my properties that my father was run, who passed or is incapable. And I was unaware, and I have experienced the state basically using the system of the SB 9 to hurry up and demolish and build on my land in a basic lesser value issue, taking all the equity out. And I think that violates my rights as a property owner to due process. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open to general discussion. I wouldn't, I think, should we just start again with the design review board? I mean, you, you, well, no, but I think you all have, you deal with these issues a lot more than we do. So I think, and you've had time to rest and think about it, so. So let's go ahead and start, though, with Board Member Gannon.
Start with Tom.
No, let's start with Board Member Gannon, who has been waiting very patiently to speak.
Oh, I don't think you want to hear me speak. We can start with Chair Gibbs.
Is that okay, Steve?
Sure, whatever.
All right, I'm going to be rather brief. The first point is, is to talk about the, you know, just so the public knows, there is a carve-out from all these SB 9, SB 450 for coastal act. And our land use plan, which includes the land use element and the CDP, are therefore, in my view, exempt. That is not at all without debate or different points of view. And the city councils still, I think, you know, has not made an ultimate fine decision. So what's going on here, and it's really important to understand that this is in the interest of the community if it's done correctly. What we don't want to have happen is unfettered SB 9 development. It only requires a 1,200-square-foot lot, so you can subdivide. There's a lot of open space in people's lots that can carve out 1,200 square feet and create an SB 9. So this is, and we're seeing bigger SB 9s on design review. So this is something that's impacting the community. And without objective standards, if the rule is, or if the decision of the city council is, that we can only apply objective standards to those projects, then we better come up with some objective standards that starts providing protection to the community. And with that, I wasn't on board with this six months ago, but I've seen the light. And Morris, you know, I'm telling you, this is a challenge, and we got to meet it, or we're going to have a lot of really upset residents in this town whose properties are going to be hurt, harmed, which not is just a money thing, but it's a psychological thing as well. Look up what's going on on Upper Bluebird. You know, those residents are, including one who's maybe on the panel here tonight, it's a big deal. So the challenge to you, and I thought it was really interesting, I read all the materials, and I'm thinking, okay, how are you going to slice this? Because, as I said before, the standard that you're going to come up with here, and what we've talked about, and I'm glad we're focusing on this, is objective standards that will create a separate path that SB 9 will have to go through or go to design review where we can do our subjective stuff. I agree with the comments and questions that objectivity and the. and the things that we do on a regular basis that protect this community, you know, view equity, privacy, mass and scale, neighborhood compatibility, those are subjective. So if we're going to create an objective, different path that we can apply to SB 9, which would apply to any other homeowner doing a new construction, we need to carefully think through not just style. There's no style here. You know, we get styles, you know, we just, you know, we've allowed modern or contemporary in places that have beach cottages primarily. It is, we have not filtered based upon style. And certainly where we've kind of brought that in, you get a minority view on the design review panel and probably override us if we did it at city council, because we're an eclectic city. So if we're going to really make use of this and protect the community, we've got to focus on what's important. One is view equity, another is privacy. We've got an SB 9 project that's creating a whole slew of windows overlooking someone's backyard, totally taking away their privacy. So we need to become focusing on standards, objective standards in those critical areas, mass scale, view equity, privacy, landscaping also. But I think landscaping objectivity is easy to do a lot of what we want to do, which is, you know, landscaping at certain heights and no higher than the rooftop. That's generally, you know, that's often what we do in design review to protect view equity and privacy using landscaping to protect privacy by using landscaping in the side yard setbacks or what have you. So the real challenge is how we do privacy and view equity and mass and scale. I like your approach of design, where design brings in articulation, you know, within various design categories that reduces mass and scale. So you just can't do a blob. Or what we have now, we have building envelope, which is way too large. It needs to be, you know, this category needs to have a reduced mass and scale if you're going to go the easy route with design articulation. And I like your approach, even though I don't think styles is really the way to go. It probably will do more with design, objective standards for design articulation with respect to view equity. I've been knocking ideas around with, you know, people on the board and also people in the community and with a couple of city council people about how we can do that. And I'd be very interested to hear how Delmar, I think your job number one for this community is figure out how you create safe harbor view equity within that special category. For example, limiting view equity to certain rooms, to certain rooms. You know, such as primary bedroom, well, they should be primary bedroom, living room, kitchen, and dining room. Most people don't have like separate dining rooms, sometimes they do. But those are the four that we often see. And talk about, you know, something on the order of percentage view impact. So no more than 20% from, say, kitchen and living room and 10% in master bedroom. You know, some percentage that they have to meet in taking away, and there's two types of views, it's ocean and hilltop. So have a percentage so that they can block some view, but not so much that it's going to be traumatic to the neighbors. And if they want further blockage of view, design review, and we'll do our view equity stuff. Privacy, the way to objectify, I'm really interested to hear other board members and commissioners talk about how we can, you know, give you some objectification ideas. But I think with privacy is the location of the windows and the requirement for plants in the side yard setbacks. There may be, you know, some other things. Mass and scale sometimes also creates, you know, privacy issue because it takes away light and air. So we kind of put that, like if you put, you know, a 25-foot, 30-foot, two-story wall on the setback, and it totally overshadows, takes all the light away from the next-door neighbor's patio. That's an issue. Again, I think your design articulation, objective standards could help in that regard, limiting how close a second story can go to a side yard with a patio on the other side. Also window location, making sure that the windows, there's no direct-facing windows into the adjoining building's windows, or that they be made opaque. So those are some of my ideas. I am not an architect. Morris probably has a million more good ideas. And David Firth in the background, another great architect in town, may have some even more, you know, better ideas. But the focus should be on achieving, you know, a modicum of protection to the community from like, through objective standards for whether it's SB 9 or any one, or any other property owner wants to go through this, you know, expedited, simplified course. The one other thing too, Patrick, is, you know, a lot of these ideas, I don't know if they fly within SB 9. I have put in some analysis of it. But if I'm on the wrong track, I kind of speak out and say, let's not go down that path. But I think it, I think it could work.
I agree.
Chair, could I, could I just make a statement here? I'm reading the staff report here on the very first page, the executive summary. And maybe, we haven't seen what your scope of work is, you know, we haven't read that document. But the staff report says that your work will be completed in two phases. This is phase two. Phase one will establish objective form and massing parameters such as height and building setbacks. So that's the objectification of the design standards. While phase two, which is what we're talking about tonight, will expand to include architectural style and character standards for single and two-family development. So we're off. You know, we're talking about something different than what it sounds like your scope of work is.
No, I think we've hit on the scope of work.
I don't know, because I feel like there's multi-thin, I feel like we're looking at an admin streamlined concept is one thing that we've talked about or looking to do. That's why the whole box-in-the-box concept. We're looking at trying to rewrite some of the design review guidelines in order to.
I think you want to speak. Go for it. I want to make sure we're talking about apples and apples here, not apples and oranges. Go ahead. Clarify for us.
If I may, I'd like to add a little bit of context to tonight's discussion. To Commissioner Whiten's point, yes, this is jumping ahead a little bit in terms of presenting the phase two scope of work before you, before the phase one objective design standards have been presented.
Well, I was wondering, I was trying to remember those, hearing those, but we haven't.
We didn't have it.
There have been prior discussions, and particularly at the city council policy level, with respect to what the city can do to ensure that the city is doing what it can to ensure that the character, the special character of the city's residential neighborhoods are maintained into the future, understanding that state laws are on an annual basis passed that are, generally speaking, reducing local regulatory control. The city has long relied on its discretionary review process to ensure that neighborhood compatibility expectations are met, view equity concerns raised by neighbors are addressed, privacy is another one, grading through environmental context considerations and SEQA. And the city does continue to have some discretion through its coastal act authority, as Chair Gibbs had mentioned. At the city council meeting yesterday evening, there was an item presented on the designer review efficiency ordinance that did come before both the planning commission and the designer review board in the form of a joint study session earlier this year. Yesterday, we did present a revised draft ordinance. And what we did is we did include in draft form certain objective development standards to exempt single-family, or I should say, primary dwelling unit projects that fit within this box-in-the-box concept and allow for a design review exemption. They would continue to be subject to a coastal development permit. And this is the phase one ODS that was referenced. It is admittedly a blunt tool, and phase two will layer in additional architectural requirements, which is the subject of tonight's presentation. Phase one, we were looking to develop a pretty restrictive building envelope in order to mitigate the risk of potential view equity impacts, privacy impacts, and so forth. So to that end, one standard that was proposed by staff to the city council for consideration is a maximum building height of 16 feet, for example. And the reason why 16 feet was chosen is that's also the maximum allowed height allowed under state ADU law for a new detached ADU structure. There were also requirements with respect to increased minimum setback requirements, both at the front and rear yards and also the side yards, landscaping requirements. And Christoph alluded to those. There would be maximum maintained heights of 16 feet within the building envelope and less within the setback areas. And that's again, for those applicants that opt into this designer review exempt permit pathway. Those projects again would still be subject to CDP requirements. And so those findings would need to be made in order to grant the project an approval. Tonight, we're focusing primarily on the architectural requirements. That's what JKA was directed to study. I think there's been a lot of good, intelligent discussion about those specific standards. And then also just the project as a whole and what the city does into the future as we look to reconcile our historical approach to ensuring neighborhood compatibility and maintaining, I had, staying ahead of state law or catching up to state law for the time being. With that, if there are any questions related to the phase one objective design standards or ODS.
I have a quick question, and that is, is there any concern that the state, it will pass state muster constraining this pathway to a single-story building?
Staff is not concerned. I don't believe that the state is necessarily concerned about how large you can build or allowing for mansion-sized homes. Really, the state is passing this slew of housing laws year after year in order to increase housing production more generally.
This is kind of the question I asked, interjecting the question, which led to my comments. Is the scope of the consultant services to evaluate, to further evaluate kind of the special approval process for homes, not only style, but also ways of objectifying view equity, privacy, mass and scale, and the other, you know, subjective things that are subjective within the design review guidelines?
I'll perhaps look to Wendy to confirm the scope of work. My understanding was it really was more directed towards developing architectural style standards.
Because that's kind of, you know, in all due respect, that's kind of meaningless. It's a pointless exercise if all they're looking at is style. We need to come up with objective standards for this safe harbor, if you will, that would apply to SB 9 and other projects that provide view equity, privacy, and mass and scale protections to our community. If they're not doing that, I'm not sure what the benefit is.
I think some of those concerns will be addressed through the phase one objective design standards. We, and again, it's admittedly a blunt tool. We're looking to establish this permit pathway that's designer review exempt in order to ensure that the city does have objective design standards to apply that minimizes the potential impacts of projects that have to be reviewed under an objective lens, with an exception for coastal act compliance requirements.
The phase one is trying to address those things, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, no, they are being addressed. He was saying that phase two is not addressing those. But phase one is trying to address those issues and partly by constraining the mass so dramatically to where there's less chance that it's going to have issues related to overlooking privacy, view blockage, and so forth.
That is correct.
I'm just curious, can you tell me this streamlining permit and the 16-foot, I assume it's a new build, most likely. Either they tear down an old house or they find a lot somewhere. And they spend that much money on a lot. Do you really feel like there's a large amount of people that are going to be able to come? Because you're going to have to confine it pretty well to be able to meet all those standards. Do you guys, did you do the study on that? Like, we expect we're going to be able to process 40% more quickly by doing it this way? Or did you just say, this is a good idea to streamline and go more admin?
It's hard for us to anticipate what the level of interest might be in this permit pathway. I will say, phase one is being pursued as something of an urgency ordinance, and staff believes that there is sufficient justification to do so. Long-term, we're happy to have discussions with the planning commission, designer review board, and the community on what more we can do. We're not at a phase three project at this point, but that is certainly a possibility. I will say that city staff has explored technology solutions potentially to address things like view equity through the use of GIS 3D model systems. That is a more longer-term project, if it's possible. We are interested in exploring those ideas. For now, we're starting small because there is an interest at the city council level to do something quickly.
And this is based on the urgency ordinance that you're saying?
So the designer review efficiency ordinance will be presented as an urgency ordinance. And then we will also be processing potentially that same ordinance through the coastal commission in non-urgency ordinance form. So under state law, the government code allows local jurisdictions to expedite the implementation of an ordinance that goes through a local adoption process when certain findings are met. And that would include the phase one objective design standards.
Remind me when that needs to be brought before the state?
So the process by which the city will adopt an urgency ordinance involves first, a presentation to the planning commission at a noticed public hearing that will happen relatively soon. And the planning commission, because they review all proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, will make a formal recommendation to the city council. And at that point, it would then be presented to the city council at two, at a minimum of two readings.
Thank you, Anthony. Any other questions for Anthony before we move on to other statements? Thank you, Anthony, that was very helpful. The public hearing is not open right now. Thank you. Other thoughts on the part of the design review board?
Yes, for me, I'll just do a quick one, only because, sorry, I think very production-minded, that's just how my brain works. So process on how you build the house, so to speak, is important. So I think one thing was, I miss under, when you did your presentation, I was sort of over here scratching my head, because I'm like, style, style? That's like least important, as Chair Gibbs and everybody has mentioned. Not that we don't respect what you did, it's just like it didn't follow a pattern of how are we going to build off this to make the changes we need to make? SB 9 is one element, admin streamlining is another one, refining our guidelines is another one, dealing with the state restrictions, which is what I said in my beginning comments. How do we find the carve-outs, the workarounds, the CDPs, the LPC, all the things to keep Laguna moving forward and evolving, but maintain our traditions and our uniqueness? And how do we deal with this new SB 9 monster that's come in and sort of shook everybody up? And I feel like it's bigger than us right here tonight. It's workshop, as someone mentioned. And I don't know how transparent that has to be to the public in production. We don't have to talk to everybody. You just get in a group and you make decisions. So I understand it has to be pretty transparent. But I feel like the process has been a little cumbersome to get to this point, that we're not benefiting you or benefiting what our outcome needs to be in the process that we've chosen to find these solutions. So that's where, I don't know where, how to make that change. I don't know who's the, is it the council that's the final word on that? Is it Anthony? I'm not sure. Is it Wendy? You know, where do we start to say, here's the stepping stones to get to what we need to get to? to get to? And what's the most urgent? And then do we have to answer certain calls with the state to get things in before a certain deadline, before they come down with the hammer on something? So, you know, bigger than my pay grade, but I think we just have to structure it much more efficiently.
Can I follow up on that by saying, I think what we're doing is, each of us is giving you our, I don't think we're going to come to a big consensus necessarily on exactly what you should do and how you should write it. We're giving you input now, you're going to go do a draft, and then it's going to be circulated, and it's going to come back, and that's, and it's going to be refined through that iterative process, I assume. I do see some patterns forming, though, that I think are, in my mind, are pretty clear. And that is, if I could be so bold, and that is that we're not a style-driven community. I've, I hate to confess this, but I've worked on a lot of master plan communities where we're very style-focused, and we do pattern books and style books. And all the people that work on them, none of them live in those communities, they live in Laguna Beach, because they don't want to have that type of predicted, you know, environment. So I think that one of the conclusions you're hearing is that it is an eclectic community, we love it that way. There are styles, but the styles are either historic, or they're voluntarily, you know, imposed by, you know, by the homeowners. But I think what you are hearing is, there could be, and you said this, but that was very interesting at the beginning. You almost described a generic Laguna style. You've talked about setbacks, you talked about articulation, you talked about general colors, not that we want to get into, you know, but there could be some parameters. It almost seems to me, and I'm going to say this, and everybody can tell me I'm wrong, rather than going into a style-pattern book and trying to identify specific styles that people need to follow, which would be a very cumbersome process to do, using these more generic architectural characteristics, such as mass articulation, you know, glazing to some port, variation of roof form, you can almost build a so-called generic Laguna style that is kind of hard to screw up if it's defined, you know, fairly carefully. And it doesn't allow necessarily the gem, or the architectural jewel, or the singer masterpiece, but it doesn't have to. Because those are going to be houses that aren't going to follow this process anyway, because they're going to be more than 16 feet, and they're going to be larger, and they're going to want more setbacks, so there's going to be more view issues. So those, the architectural gems have all the opportunity in the world to still occur. We're just looking at a lowest, in a way, kind of a lowest common denominator set of criteria that you could use these generic characteristics and, you know, keep it pretty simple, and not necessarily be damaging to a neighborhood.
So would you agree, Commissioner, that the criteria, the objective standards that they're looking for us to define for renovations, is something that we still need to define?
I think they need to define that based on the studies of, you know, architect, you know, finding the patterns within our community that kind of represent, you know, a generic community character, and codify those in these objective standards. Now, a lot of people are not going to like that, because they're going to say, well, no, that doesn't really, it's not craftsman enough, it's not cottagey enough. But I think in this particular path, I don't know that it really necessarily can be. And a boxy, you know, contemporary home just isn't going to fit in this. If you want to do that, you have to go outside of this process.
And with respect to the artistic variation, articulate, we call it design articulation, objectifying that, you know, with, I like that approach. You can also consider, in defining that, reducing mass-scale impacts on neighborhoods, reducing visual, you know, view equity issues. So in other words, the cool, good styles get approved by design review, following what the commissioner said on first hearing, because, among other things, they do accommodate those other concerns.
And there's been times, just talking about the topic for the evening, there have been times where an architect will come to us with a project where it's, let's say, immediately next door to a heritage home, and they're proposing to do a modern construction. And it's been approved, but with modifications, to kind of complement the neighborhood, not stick out like a sore thumb. So, I don't know, do that with what you will. The comments that I have, minor to major new construction, all leaves to be within the property line, and never to encroach into a front, rear, or side yard setback. That's subjective. Also, maximum building height, not to exceed the maximum building height of an existing building within 300 feet of the applicant's address. For example, if a building envelope is, let's say, 30 feet, which is rare in this city, but if it is 30 feet, the tallest building within 300 feet is 27 feet, then the applicant cannot exceed 27 feet. If they want to exceed 27 feet, then they have to go to DRB. And then, the exception to that rule could be, if the home is located, let's say, in the back row, or if the neighbors behind declare, behind the applicant, declare that they have no significant view impact, then they could exceed the 27 feet. So that's objective. And then...
Can I comment on your comment?
Oh, yes, please.
I just, I just want to clarify that my understanding is, the objective criteria that's already being developed in Phase One would not allow a 27-foot building anyway. It's really a 16-foot, the building envelope is highly constrained in this process.
Are you limiting, does that statute, Patrick, limit SB nine projects to that? To those, to the emergency ordinance?
Correct, so the SB nine in 450, one of the key provisions is that you cannot apply different objective standards than the underlying zone. So going back, so if the underlying zone has the box-within-a-box, and says 16 feet, we can, we can go ahead and apply that to...
So the emergency ordinance would apply to SB nine?
The urgency ordinance...
The one that's being passed, it hasn't passed yet?
Correct. It hasn't been passed, and as I sit here today, yes, I would say a generally applicable, duly-passed urgency ordinance, as long as it applies to the entirety of the zone. So if the, we can't pass an urgency ordinance that says, we're going to treat SB nine and SB 450 different. If we pass an urgency ordinance that says, in this zone, these are the objective standards, we can apply that if someone were to come and attempt to do an SB nine, SB 450 project in that zone.
But the expedited process we're talking about is the box-within-the-box process.
Correct.
It has wider setbacks and lower massing by definition on any, regardless of the size of the lot, whether it's a lot split or whatever, right? So the issues that are being raised by Board Member Gannon are not really necessarily applicable here in terms of averaging heights of a block, you know, because it can't be more than 16 feet to start with. Am I, or am I misunderstanding?
I think that's a fair assessment, I'll kind of defer to the consultants here.
The very restrictive building envelope we're talking about. Yeah.
Well, so, okay. Yeah, I really appreciate the conversation around the horn. I mean, being on Design Review for quite a while, I think really, you know, the overall concept for the community is, the beauty of Laguna Beach architecture and neighborhood characteristics lies within the juxtaposition of the styles of architects mixed with the landscape and the surrounding coastal beauty. I think that's what you're trying to capture in some of this context. To the colleague's point, the style really isn't the driver. It's really the lot size. I think one of the challenges on Design Review that we face is a lot of the non-conforming conditions throughout the city. So within the neighboring properties and the existing property, an example that I'll put forward is, you know, one house we saw recently, half the house was built in the rear yard setback. And now they're coming to the community saying, well, we're going to develop the entire rest of the lot, but we're going to keep all this non-conformity. There is no prescribed relief in that, now that we have these ADU laws and these SB nine laws, because it's really creating the concept that they're maxing at their envelope beyond the scope of what would be prescribed for the lot, regardless of the 50% or the thresholds that we have, because our thresholds aren't constrained for every kind of unique situation. We also have the old, like, the old parts of our community, that properties have built across property lines. You know, there's a lot of weird conditions that I've seen throughout the years. Access, I know we haven't talked about it much tonight, but access in some of these older ones becomes, or undeveloped lots, becomes a really big part of the conversation because of how it interacts with the pedestrian skate, the characteristics of the streets, the safety of the streets, the fire safety components. So those are all big things. I think, if I'm going to give some direction, we really need to take a look at the lot sizes. I think there is some elements that could be some characteristics within the zones that you guys are creating, but we probably need to increase those zones, especially with, as I mentioned earlier, there's definitely some specific plan areas that have some more callouts, and those should probably be their own zones. You know...
Louis, can I ask a question of you?
Yeah.
Based on what you're, the direction you're going right now? I mean, your statement is implying that there's going to be some zonification within our community, where certain parts of the town would have a different set of criteria than other parts of the town. And this presentation started kind of in that direction a little bit. It is, do you think that's what we're doing? That instead of having a generic sort of set of criteria for a fast-track project, that there would actually be variations in the criteria based on where it is in town?
I think, I mean, that's, that's how I see the community as it exists, as I've gone from neighborhood to neighborhood, and probably seen, at this point, probably 1,000-plus homes throughout Laguna Beach.
It did occur to me while we were talking, that the flatlands really have a certain character that makes them very, that unique and interesting, and when you get up on the hillsides, you tend to have bigger homes and more contemporary custom homes. And it almost made me think, does it make sense to have different criteria even for those two very simplistic, you know, context locations? Let alone, you know, sort of creating zones up and down the coast? Is there just a more of a topographical, you know, kind of differentiation?
There could be. I mean, I mean, areas like Diamond Crest View obviously have their own, you know, steep topographies and that stuff, and it does exist throughout the community. In some cases, our language doesn't carry from one area of town to the next. But as a board member and as, like, the board, we've applied those standards as needed based on the topography, the site location, the neighboring context. And that's a hard thing to do, just, I think, from your guys' job, I don't envy you trying to solve this problem. I mean, I've been scratching my head with this for a long time, but it does exist differently from like...
I mean, it would be a way of at least trying to address neighborhood compatibility a little, to a certain...
I think it's driven less by neighborhood and more by topography and lot size. Because you look at the homes, for example, in North Laguna up in the hills, they're similar to, you know, to Temple Hill and Mystic Hill. The extreme is Diamond Crest View, really unique. But there's areas of, you know, of Bluebird Canyon homes that are very similar to that. I think, yes, neighborhoods do have some characteristics. Woods Coves got its own little character, a lot of small college cottages and whatnot. But again, and maybe you do a combination of both, Chair. You know, I think it's topography and lot size is the big driver that creates conformity. Tree Streets is a good example. All the lot sizes are the same, topography is more or less the same, and you get a lot of, a lot of different styles, but a lot of uniformity and mass scale and the like.
George, you had a comment?
I just, I just wanted to make a comment, I've been doing a lot of listening here, and I think if you start to break the city down into all these various zones, and then try to create objective standards for each zone, you're just complicating the whole thing. It's like, it's like, it's going against what I think we're trying to do here. And I, I just don't agree with the idea that we want to create more zones, like, you know, every three blocks is a new zone in the town that has its own objective standards. I think it's, I think, I think it's going directly against what we're trying to do here. And I think it's, I think, I think if there's a set of objective standards that is well-defined, and if somebody wants to apply and go through that process, they know what they're getting themselves into, and what they can do and what they can't do. I think that should just be kind of across the board for the whole, the whole community. Because, you know, and I also have a feeling in terms of, you know, when you talk about various parts of town, whether it's the canyon or South Laguna, you know, they have been annexed into Laguna Beach, and I don't, I have a different view of how those annexed properties should be dealt with. I think they should be, they're part of Laguna Beach, they're not, they, I don't feel they should have their own set of objective standards that they, that they get to apply to their world, that is different than what everybody else is having to deal with.
Yeah, the objective standards really boil down to the issue of neighborhood compatibility, which is what, Louis, you were talking about. If you can have, you know, define more discreetly these neighborhoods, that there are certain measurable metrics in all of these neighborhoods, but then that just gets so fractured and complicated, and it doesn't do what Georgia's saying, doing some, it's too complicated. We need to get to the very essence of the thing. And I think the essence of the thing is neighborhood compatibility. And that, if neighborhood compatibility can be objectified, it will apply everywhere. So objectively, in a neighborhood that is very hilly, it's not consistent with the neighborhood to put housing on the top of a hill, if there is no, if there are not other examples in that neighborhood. And it's not, it would be objective to say, if most of the garages are at street level, then that garage should be at street level. So you can go through each, the neighborhood, the neighborhood compatibility standards can be objectified to apply universally to the whole city.
So that does kind of get to a little bit of what Board Member Bergannon was saying, even though maybe sure heights were too high, given what we're talking about, but it, she was suggesting that there be some kind of larger context that is part of a, dare I say, algorithm on the mass of the house, that forces it into, you know, not being, you know, the sore thumb on the, on the, on the block street?
Yeah.
Is that something that's possible?
Yeah, I agree with Steve on this. I think it's, I think it's imperative to go lot by lot. You know, I think there are, there are certain conditions that would enable a home to go up a little bit further, and some other conditions where they would want to reduce it. I mean, we see it quite, quite a bit. And if there was a box that can be defined by the city, I know that's a bit more of an effort, I think that that would help alleviate a lot of the stress involved with the entire process, even, even through DRB, which we would want them to go to. But even taking a minimum, if you were to ask someone who was like, considering purchasing a buildable lot, and they, and ask them, hey, let's consider, let's consider this lot, I want to build a house, what's available to me? That can be answered right now. And I think it's imperative that that can be answered in a way that it also conforms to the current city objective and subjective standards, so that you can build a 16-foot-tall home and get the approvals without having to go through the full process. And I think there is intent there, but there's also intent with, you know, trying to minimize to the best of our degree, not these overarching McMansions. And I think that the ODS does a really good job at that. I think they've, they went back, they went down substantially, and I think that, you know, to speak to the state's governance, they just want houses. They don't care if they're big, they want small houses for people to live in, and I think that that's pretty, pretty manageable without really eliminating our objective standards and also our subjective standards. And if we can go lot by lot and say, hey, on this lot, it would be great if this house was curbside, because that would limit, that would limit the view obstructions from the rear neighbor, that's totally thoughtful. And I think that that would stage it in a way similar to South Pasadena, where, you know, you're able to get clearance upfront. And if, and if a homeowner wants to expand on that, then let's bring them to the Designer Review Board process. But at least they'll have clear, defined measures so that they can have a buildable site. From what I'm seeing in this ODS right now, there are a handful of sites that there wouldn't be a clear, buildable home that can be built objectively because of setbacks and because of limit, mostly limitations on setbacks. And I think that we want to avoid that, because that will come up again through the objective standards. So if we put... So if we put in the effort now and go through each of the whatever 10 to 13,000 lots that we have here, I think it can be done. I know it's quite an effort, but like a lot of the other board members said tonight, we're not talking about every home, but if we, if we look at a majority of each of those neighborhoods, there'll be a lot of congruencies and we'll start to develop the standard of being like, all right, this makes sense here, this makes sense there. And I think that could go a long way pertaining to the style of the homes that we're here to discuss tonight, which I would say it's out of my purview. I would defer to the architects that are here tonight. I think they've got a, a, you know, bit more of a skillset to address that. You know, I think that they're very capable of putting something forward that would work for the town in each of those zones. And we should utilize these resources, you know? He, he mentioned 50 years of experience. He pretty much wrote the code book on it. So I would defer to some of, some of the public members that are here and, and helping guide that process and shape that process, bring them in. You know, I think that, that'll go a long way. And I'm open to architectural styles by location. I think there's, there's a lot, that, that makes a lot of sense. But for the purpose of the ODS, it clearly spells out limiting the project. And I think we, we got to figure out a way to limit it, but also make it work for the, that specific lot. That would go a long way.
So I want to make sure we hear from Ken.
Well, I had a question. I think this goes back because something Patrick said kind of confused me a little bit. You were saying that SB nine doesn't allow the city to be more restrictive than the underlying zone.
Correct. So, so let me, so the SB nine was kind of the original bill, right? That said, hey, you can now split your lot. You can put, you know, very, you know, you can develop it in various different ways. As I understand it, in response to numerous jurisdictions, and I'm not, I'm not saying the city of Laguna, they then made that process very, very difficult. The standards were different such that if I came and wanted just to sing, build a single family home, the process was a lot easier and simpler and, you know, more straightforward. If, if I did an SB nine, you had to jump through a bunch of hoops. The standards were different. So what SB four 50 said, separate state law that built upon SB nine, that said, you as a city can only apply the objective standards to the SB nine projects that otherwise apply in the underlying zone, i.e. you cannot take, I'm going to use myself and Wendy as an example here. If Wendy has a lot and she wants to build a single family home and I have a lot and I do an SB nine lot split and want to build two homes, you need to apply the exact same objective standards to both of those.
Okay, but this is what's confusing me. So this box in a box concept is, but, so we're not changing the municipal code in terms of current maximum building envelope for typical projects, correct?
Correct.
So the maximum building height in certain zones is whatever, 26 feet and it's got five yard setbacks. We're talking about now for, for this project, for these projects, if they want to go through the ministerial process, they can agree to this more restrictive box in a box concept. So.
Right.
But in the, and you would, that is more restrictive than the underlying zone, but they're, because they have the multiple paths that they can go through, they could, they can follow this ministerial approach and if you stay with the smaller, smaller envelope, or they can say, no, well, we'll, we'll just go with the regular, regular rules and allowable maximum building height and setbacks and everything else and have to go through design review board and, and roll. And so that way, because there's those two options, you're not being more restrictive to that applicant.
And right, using the example I just gave of myself and Ms. Jung, that once again, in that example, I was the one who did the SB nine lot split. She did not, she could still avail herself to that box within a box. So she could come to the city and said, I haven't even, I haven't done any SB nine. I just want to build my house on the box within the box. That would be her right. I, I as the SB nine lot splitter would similarly have that same right.
So Patrick, on that same line, but if we as a community made the general standards much more restrictive for all properties, in a sense, but then gave leeway that if you wanted more, you come to the discussion of the community to, to, to design review or planning, you know, whatever the path is through the public hearing process. That I think is what's most important to the community because I, I want to say like eight times out of 10, projects that are complicated, most of the complications show up the last five days before the hearing.
I'm aware.
Many applause to staff for dealing with all the unknown certainties that show up. But most of the conflicts don't arise until we have the public hearing. So where we need to go as a community is make, make those by right, by, by right prescriptions really tight. And if you want to be much more creative, we're, we're, it's much more encouraged for our community will want to do more. I mean, that's the nature of every application is they want more. Give them the small box is where we need to be. And then we have the carve outs to allow for more in the right circumstances.
Yeah. And whether it's phase one, which is the box within the box or what you're doing, when we create this objective standard, you know, special path to deal with SB nine, it needs to consider maximal protection to view equity, privacy and mass and scale. So that's why those need to be objectified. And the, the, the comments or, you know, the presentation was what should be, you know, should versus shall. When you're developing the shall within the style, within your scope, scope of purview, think about objectifying within the special category, those important attributes which are so important to this community.
So Tom, are you saying basically when they're looking at the guidelines and our criteria, and the criteria that we're going to utilize?
They're in the phase two, if you read their report and what they're doing, is they're further objectifying a special category that avoids design review. And they're doing it in terms of style. And I think we've talked about, you know, Emir made the, the pitch that do it lot by lot or community by community. I think it's better to do it by size and topography. But however you cut it, and you're the experts, we're not, we, we know that, we know the, the, the community, residential communities like the back of our hand, those on design review, because we're there every, all the time, every month. However you cut it, let's objectify to protect neighbors views, views, privacy and, and mass.
So to most efficiently process this though, are we, are we help? I feel like you're getting information, but is there?
We talked about ideas already to do that. I think at Del Mar or one of the other towns, they saw a similar thing.
I think there's models they can use to.
I know, but I'm, I'm wondering like to Ann's point earlier, and maybe it's just too simplified of a way to look at it, but looking at the, the guidelines we have now, point by point, and all our different criterias to Mr. Commissioner Sadler is about the, you know, how, but if you're at a smaller one, then you have to go by those standards and these standards, who, what's the final standard? Setting those guidelines one by one and looking at everything as congruently as we can so that we, we're going to lose some in the process, you know, as far as keeping things the way we want. But will it refine it in such a way that we get most of it based on those guidelines? Because the state's not going to let you have subjective anymore pretty soon. We're not going to, it's going to be where every homeowner that's doing a renovation is going to push back on subjective. And then we're, then we're done.
But we're not there now. I don't think we need, I don't think we need to plan with that in mind.
I think what you all are, I think what you all are suggesting to staff is that there's an additional scope of work, not necessarily being addressed tonight. That is to take the existing, not the fast track guidelines, but the existing guidelines and try and make those addition also a couple of steps more objective. And, but that's not really what we're, we're addressing right now. That's a future exercise.
I have one more comment on view equity component. It was brought up by Chair Gibbs on kind of the identifying the memorial rooms or the more significant rooms. Another element of that that needs to be addressed is really what is the lots, like either the existing lot or the neighboring lots, where is their primary view based on the orientation of their lot? Because too many of the homes, like there really can only be one direction, primary view, whether that's down the street, towards the rear of the lot, through the side yard. There really needs to be, that needs to be identified. And then where a secondary threshold, like orientation on, on the lots could be identified as well. It'll be, it's pretty difficult, but.
Commissioner Goldman, do you have additional comments? Are you with us?
I am still with you. Yeah. No, I, I have no comments to anything to add any value to what's already been said.
I do.
Okay, please.
So another objective finding you could put, because there's like in Baja or in Arch Beach Heights, we've come across new applications where the neighboring property was built, gosh, maybe the 30s or 40s, and it was oriented to cut across the neighboring property that was empty. And so that, that owner of the home claimed view, view and privacy and, but you know, the, the house was built on the lot that cuts across another property. So you could put, and there's, this is something that's coming forward more and more regularly, especially as we get on these big lots. So you could say something to the likes of, an applicant shall not be oriented, a proposal should not be oriented towards another property, whether an existing dwelling or empty buildable lot, whether an existing dwelling unit is on the, the lot next door or it's a buildable empty lot. This way, the home that's being proposed doesn't face, this primary living space doesn't look over another person's property line, I guess, if that makes sense? Am I make, is that making any sense?
Yeah, you're talking about a performance kind of criteria that will help address privacy. And I think that's one of the things that they're, they're probably trying to look at.
Yeah, like in Diamond Crest View, all those homes as, you know, those roads are very curvaceous, but all those homes are based like straight out from whatever angle on that, that, those curves, instead of angling the homes so that they kind of, you, you have a lot of pie shapes, lots up there. So instead of the homes cutting across the pie shape, pretty much all those homes were facing towards the frontage of the pie shape so that no home looks across another dwelling unit or buildable lot. So that's an objective finding that you could put in there.
Great, thank you. Susan?
Yeah. And not to be tedious about this, but the process, phase one, the box within the box, that's coming back to us another, for another meeting. So once it goes through the process, and will it go to DRB also? No? Then it goes to council? That's the end of phase one work. Is that right? Under this contract?
That is correct.
Okay. So there is nowhere in the contract to do what we're talking about, which is to legalize the subjective standards.
That's phase two.
You mean objective?
Yeah. Well, objectify the subjective standards and make it legal, you know? Defensible.
In the, in the accelerated process, that's what phase two is.
Not talking about all design review projects, just the special category, make it objective so that SB nine has a root.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I was a little confused by the staffer report because in the, in the introductory summary, it just says, single and two family residential. Doesn't actually refer to SB nine. But, I mean.
It's all.
But if I can check it, if I can take a try at that, this is really being driven by SB nine.
It is.
But any single family or two family home can utilize the accelerated pathway. Otherwise, we're going to be getting into fair housing issues with the state.
SB.
Yeah. And, and so, but the, but the reality is, if like on my street, the typical construction is buy a $2 million home, tear it down, build a McMansion, that's not going to follow this anyway. None of this is going to fit because of the, the constraints on the, and that's going to go through the regular design process.
Buy that lot, split it, SB nine.
And which would be a small home.
They can, yeah. Could be four houses.
But full new construction, yes, is problematic, but in some cases, they actually solve a fair amount more problems with the new construction because it brings a fair amount more up into standard. Where the crux really is, is when they're doing the remodels, that the remodels expand far more than what they'd be allowed by doing a new construction.
But this wouldn't apply to that anyway. It's going, it's going to go through your.
But that, I mean, I'm just trying to articulate the complexity.
So.
What we're hearing.
Problem. I, I, I think we're at a point where we should try and wrap it up. I think we're starting to go around in circles. I, I wouldn't mind, I.
I just have one more quick question.
Yes, George.
Is there any, you know, I know, I know that once this thing gets solidified and, and, you know, everybody's sort of in general agreement that the objective standards are now able to be applied. Is there any, is there any ability, you know, down the road, like, you know, say this has been in place for a year or two to, and we go, wow, you know, what we thought was a really great idea is, is just caused a problem. Is there any ability to evolve this, this document at some point if we find that certain pieces of it are not working?
So, I mean, I'll go ahead and take a crack and, and you can.
You can.
Right, correct. I mean, like, like any zoning ordinance, the, the, the city can decide to change it. And of course I would add the, the caveat to that, it would have to be done in conjunction and cognizance of any state housing laws, right? Such that if we've kind of gone down this path and there's a few more state housing laws that get passed and we're kind of relying upon this to kind of.
And you know there will be.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a fair assessment.
This is an evolving process because they're objectifying more, but I don't think that means, and I think the council is the same place hopefully, that we objectify more in anticipation of new laws that haven't been passed. Let's deal with what we.
I, I, I'm a little, I'm a little disconcerted here on one point, and that is that I, I think we're giving you a very confusing direction in that I think we've described three different models to you. And let me summarize them as I see them. The first model is, as you started out with and as I was articulating in my comments, there's, there is such a thing kind of as a generic Laguna house that is articulated, it has certain reforms, there's certain massing, it's, it's a beautiful piece of architecture just because it's, it's well crafted and there's a way of trying to objectively define some of that, still leaving flexibility for creativity and design. That's model one. Model two is there's a contextual analysis that looks at houses within either right next door only or within a certain defined distance. And it looks at, you know, sort of reform and style and so forth. And there's a certain kind of congruence or compatibility that you try and do. How you do that objectively over the counter is, escapes me. But anyway, that was kind of model number two. And there was also a third model, which is what you started out with, which there is some support on the design review board for, I'm not sure there is on the planning commission, that there actually be zones and districts and neighborhoods and there's, there's unique criteria for each of those zones, districts or neighborhoods. So we've articulated, there are proponents for all three of those models, I think, sitting up here. And I'm a little disturbed that, that those are very different. And I wish we could give you a little bit more consensus on leaning towards one of those rather than just saying, here they are.
I, I, I just want to take a different tack from what the, the chair planning as a chair of design review. I'm not sure that design review feels that we should be breaking it down that way. I know one member does. I don't think that's feasible. I, I, I look at it more, and I think the direction to you has been more to look at this, what you're doing as a tool to come up with objective standards for, for the special category so that we can provide this option, you know, rather than, real quick, rather than full design review. And in doing that, use the tools that you have handy, including style, including, you know, potentially size of lot and topography, maybe even neighborhoods, you know, whatever those tools are that a lot you raised in your report, with the eye to protect what's important to this community, the eclectic nature of this community for those SB nine and for other people who want to take advantage of this, view equity, privacy and mass and scale. And I think you've got a lot of tools without kind to categorize them. And even, I think Emir made a good case for even doing it down to lot by lot. I don't think I see the value in that, but you're the expert. Look at those tools. You're getting input from us as to how to proceed. And I think that's the common message. I'm not specifying any particular tool. We're saying, these are the goals, use the tools. We're saying, these are the goals, use the tools. Is that kind of capturing?
Yeah. I think that, that captures it, Tom. The one, the one reason I wanted to, um, the lot by lot coverage would be great, but the, uh, the first approach, I think that Stephen mentioned was, um, uh, not, not identifying it. I would caution us from approaching the non-identifying the design for one reason. If, if, if a prefabricated, prefabricated manufacturing home company catches wind of a style, one particular style, they will reproduce that throughout every single lot that's capable of, of, of addressing that style. Uh, why? Because they'll do it at mass, the mass production. And I think that's one thing as a review board that we want to avoid, right? We don't want this copy and paste home in multiple places throughout Laguna.
And then let me, let me correct my, my misconception I might've led you to. And that is, I was not talking about a single style. I was talking about using generic building form and roofline and articulation, not style. But.
Yes. Yeah. So if there's, if there's a generic, if there's a generic version of a house that can be replicated throughout Laguna, I think that hurts Laguna. So that's why I think we should side with what Lewis was, was alluding to, which was define the character for that neighborhood. Let's be very specific. And then that would, will inhibit a copy and paste throughout all of Laguna, maybe just to that one location. If someone builds a, a craftsman up in Arch Beach Heights, I think we would all appreciate that, you know? So that's, that's kind of what, what we're going for.
I don't either.
I know we threw a lot at the consultants. Do they have any questions?
I think, I think the general, for me, the overarching thing is simplicity is what's going to work the best. And if we try to overcomplicate this thing, then we're just back to square one, as far as I'm concerned, because the, you know, the, the codes are already complex and overlapping enough as it is. And I think, I think the more we can just come down to some, some, as simplified as possible objective standards for this special category, it's going to be a, a much easier thing to apply.
And I would piggyback on that, that, and this is my completely amateur's projection that if, if all you can do is a single story home in this category, that this is going to end up being a very minority of, uh, you know, of projects coming through. And, but that's just my guess, but.
Yeah.
Coming through the special, coming through, you, you, utilizing this cat, utilizing this pathway in this particular system. I just want to some final, uh, summarize, I don't, we didn't go back and really address the public, the questions brought up in the public, um, hearing. So I just want to go over them to make sure that, you know, you do look at the 2010 guidelines by the ad hoc committee. That sounds like a really good document that you do think about. And I guess this is more towards staff, an appeal process that is not, you know, incredibly burdensome, that we do incorporate some deep thinking on landscape, that we, I think you do have some workshops in your schedule. So, because I think you heard a request for that. So there can be more free flowing discussion with the community. And then this mysterious 150 page document, you know, and I, I think at some point we're hoping to maybe see that.
Can I add just a couple of things? One, I, I, when you're considering view equity, um, please consider public views, um, primarily, you know, particularly of coastal resources. Um, and other than that, I just agree, um, with the other comments that we're saying it's not, I don't think it's as much about style as it is about pattern of development and things like that. I mean, if I, I live up on top of the world. I'm not sure if you guys are aware that, that was probably the most homogeneous neighborhood originally, when, because that was the original tract development for Laguna Beach, one of the few, if not the only, um, built in the mid sixties. So those homes were all very alike at that time. Now 60 years later, things have changed over time. People have remodeled their homes. There were some other vacant lots up there that have gotten built out since then and stuff. So there's a, more of a, a varied mix of, of styles up there now, but there still remains a certain pattern of development, meaning, you know, how, where the one story homes are situated and where two story homes and things like that. So that, that would be.
I like where this is going because I think it is starting to do what I was hoping is I think it's narrowing it down a little bit for you. Uh, we're, we're having a last minute push at the goal line here for having some differentiation within the community. I think the word style may not be the right word. It might be more of a compatibility, um, you know, you know, approach, but it does allow for there to be some differentiation and, uh, based on the unique differences between the different parts of the city. So I'm hearing the, the board ask you to generally go in that direction if you could. Any other last minute, uh, last final statements or are we prepared to close this particular item? We don't have to make a motion. We don't have to vote on anything. I, as chair of the planning commission of Laguna Beach, find this particular item on the agenda complete and finished for this evening.
Thank you, Chair.
No kings.
We're not, we're not.
Craig, yeah.
The meeting isn't over. The meeting is still on. Uh, but last item, is there any additional business, uh, from the staff or from the planning commissioners that they would like to address before we adjourn? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll second.
Well, it's got to be the.
The designer review board cannot.
I withdraw my second.
And, and do we have a second?
We need a motion from the planning commission to adjourn.
The planning commission meeting or adjourning to the?
To the next meeting.
Yeah. It's the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Which is the date is?
December 3rd.
December 3rd.
I move that we adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on December 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Second, third.
Vote.
Commissioner Dubin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sadler?
Yes.
Commissioner Whiten?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem Goldman?
Yes.
Chair Kellenberg?
Yes. So adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.